Bad shape, simply because they're gone in, they're dug up, they didn't fill in the pockets properly. And I encourage you to hold them accountable. I don't know the standards for the franchises now, but I'm sure there's still some accountability for that. And I encourage you to hold those utility companies. I'm not going to mention any names, but I think you know who they are. And I think that you should hold them accountable. And if they are under a franchise, I encourage you to relook at their franchise and make sure that that order is in there to make sure that they come back and follow up with the proper cleanup and proper repairing of that order. I thank you for giving me the time to speak to you today, and hopefully you'll get that address.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, I am the Senator.
Please, please state your name.
My name is Luciana Roca Zairena. I'm here for my sister Juanita Garcia. She had knee surgery yesterday, so she couldn't be here. But I've been going back and forth to town. Anyway, my complaint and the situation is, I know we pay taxes for our property, but it's the parking in front of her house. She has a daycare, and her daughter moved out three months ago. I mean, it took a long time to get that to happen. But she has three vehicles, and they're parked in front of my sister's house. She cannot even park. You know, her parking space is very limited. And I sent the address, and the police did tag her, put some stickers on there. She wouldn't pull them off. And then they put some paint on her tires. She moved them up. The car's tags expired on Saturday. They weren't, as of today, I don't know if she got stickers because her last name's Garcia. But something's gotta be down. You've gotta have, you've gotta be able to park in front of your house. If you're in the middle of a block, you should not have someone blocking it. And my niece has pictures. Those are my pictures. So is it okay if you want to look at them so you can, you can, you know, see what, how it's blocking? And I mean, she's 74 years old. Yeah, she's active and watches, she sets a twin. But the thing is, her parents have nowhere to park, and she parks in her driveway. Just want to so that you can see. And those cars don't move on their own. They had to be pushed to move away or like that.
Okay.
They're not running vehicles.
And the police, and the police know about this, you said?
Well, they've been scraping the tires of the feet. And there were stickers on there, but she, my sister pulled them off.
Okay.
And then when we did call the police, they said, oh, we can't do that. That's public. I don't care if it's public or not. You have to have access to at least one parking space in front of your house. When you're in the middle of a block, I'm on a corner, so I don't have no complaints. And I address it with the people if somebody's blocking my direct access to my house. But my sister, there's no way that she can do it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
I don't know if there's anything you guys can do, but I'm hoping there is because she's gonna get home, and we need her to be able to get inside her house. All right?
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, moving on to...
There's one more.
Oh, got one more. All right.
Hi, my name's Ernie. I live in Garden. Uh, the unit is being passed out. It's something that usually just isn't happening. It's already being addressed and taken care of. On it, uh, something that's just part of city...
Ernie, what's your last name, please?
Horton.
Horton? Okay.
Horton.
Horton.
Just for the, yeah, just for the record. Sorry for interrupting.
All right, remain here. I'm here is downtown, also, and building codes on it. Downtown, I know someone who was heavily accosted. Heavily accosted. Police did initially get the person. It was in the morning. I just asked them how was things going downtown. What they generally told me at the end is that's what's happening in the morning when they were opening up for business, what's happening at night on it. Also, there's a business that was broken into a few months ago. I'm not sure of the full story on it. It was made passing. But one of the comments was, it's a officer that's seen before. So there was something that could happen there. There are some buildings downtown that have been used or utilized about 20 years that you all know about from it somewhere, because of code permitting issues or other issues. When I spoke to people last year about it, one that is trying to be sold failed because the bank and the insurance said no to the deal for it. So there's issues that either civilians, either wrecking ball, or someone with more money than brands who go out there and get themselves... For that you wait on issues to resolve themselves downtown for their issues to degrade. Everyone knows the issue at the hospital. People wondering why Lincoln is having 400 firsts there, and people making, are kind of upset about it. Kearney County is restricting some of their, the only presence of that county. My wife and I are having our kid in Kearney County. We live in Garden. I can talk to you privately why that's happening. For it, you only save the rest as dogs made the same mistake the city did here in Garden. I asked some people who have some money why they fixed the issue like they did, passed. And they said, oh, no one wants to hate the loan in the hospital as well as just kind of care. City code and permitting, you're falling behind on Dodge. It's never happened. There are people I spoke to who build in Garden and Dodge, or do construction projects or updates to facilities. They find it vastly easier to do construction in Dodge than Garden. Small, make small to major projects, sometimes waits to get an answer regarding Dodge. I'm where just requires a sheet of paperwork, maybe not beat it up, even though everything performs, and gets it processed through, is my understanding. For it. So further, you wait on that, further people just, will just go to Dodge to build because it's just easier, less eggs. There is a fine line between just approving everything through and doing detailed work. When you do the work, that's fine. But at least can be easily taken care of, moved fast, exercised faster workflow. So that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ernie.
Anyone else? All right, moving on then.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from City Parks and Recreation Director Hurd to allow under Code Section 6-1 possession, consumption, and sale of cereal, malt, beverage, alcoholic liquors during the Beef Empire Days tailgate event on June 8th.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is a new event at the Garden City where Parks and Recreation is joining party, joining with Beef Empire Days, and they will be holding a tailgate event on Sunday. And they have asked a local company to come in and do a beer garden at that event on Sunday. But I think they're doing a hamburger feed and some different events for families. And they would just like to wait for the ordinance and allow for the beer garden to be on Sunday, June 8th.
Questions? Entertained a motion on this item?
I move re-perform request to waive Code Section 6-1, 6-1 to all for exemption, possession, and the sale of alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverages on June 8th, 2025, at Stevens Park for Garden City Recreation Department's Beef Empire Days tailgate event.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Item 7, reported the city manager, these are all staff-written reports. If there's any questions, we'll be happy to try to answer those. If not, item 8, meetings of note, any of these requiring RSVPs, please do those through the city clerk's office.
Matt, on, just kind of a question for meetings of notes, we were, I was asked to invite the city commission to a, a visit or walk through for the, through the Humane Society. Is this someplace that we could put that on for that?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you have a date?
I don't have a date, so I'll, I'll get that date and then get back with you or Cee Lan on...
Perfect.
When that will be. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And then the Chamber of Commerce is hosting a cocktail hour, I think, with the KCOM students. I don't remember the date on that, so just kind of for awareness.
Very good. Thank you. All right, item 9 is the consideration of the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2588-2025A.
I make a motion, we approve appropriation ordinance number 2588-2025A. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Items 10A and 10B are scheduled public hearings. We'll come back to those at those times. Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential District with PUD and zero lot line residential overlay, overlay districts to R1 Single Family District with the PUD Planned Unit Development Overlay District for the properties generally located at Block 1, lots 9 through 21 of Prairie View Acres.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor. Issues? CG Investments LLC is requesting to rezone Block 1, lots 9 through 21 of the Prairie View Acres, Phase 1, first street flat from R1 Single Family District with a PUD planned development and CL zero lot residential overlay districts to R1 Single Family District with PUD planned unit development overlay districts. Each lot contains approximately 0.19 acres, while all 13 total at approximately 2.47 acres. The lots are currently vacant, and the applicant intends for the lots to have single family homes constructed on them. The property could rezone to R1 with PUD overlay and CL overlay districts in 2018 to allow for the construction of higher density single family lots. At that time, the primary reason for the PUD was to reduce the minimum lot size. The CL overlay district allows for one side of the home to be built on a side property line while requiring at least 10 feet between the opposite property line and the home. Approximately eight of these homes were built on the lots to the east of the proposed area to be rezoned. The applicant no longer intends for the homes to be built according to the ZA overlay to the ZL overlay, but the R1 side yard setback instead. These changes are part of the amendment to the PUD plan, which we considered as a separate agenda item. Removing the ZL overlay districts would require these lots to maintain the R1 side yard setback of three and a half feet. Constructing the homes to this side setback will have little impact on the surrounding neighborhood, as all but two homes would still, would still maintain a separation of seven feet, slightly less than the current ten feet. The comprehensive plan's future land use map designates this area as low density residential, which is defined as three to six units per acre. These lots will remain residential and not change the number or the units per lot, making it consistent with the map and suggested density. Removing the ZL overlay district will have a minimum impact on the neighborhood and not change the original intent of the subdivision. The governing body is going to get its decision and status finding according to the criteria in Section 27 of 040 of the zoning regulations below the complete list of these criteria. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed rezoning request at the April 17, 2025 meeting, to which the minutes are attached. There are three alternatives invited. The governing body may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Two, the governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by two to three majority vote. And three, the governing body may return the Planning Commission's recommendation with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. Staff recommends the governing body adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation for proposed ordinance, and there's no evidence going back. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about rezoning.
What's the ordinance number on this?
3014-2025.
And... Any questions?
I think I just had a clarification. It says on the application, GC Investments LLC?
Um, it is CG.
CG Investments, okay. I think that's the only thing that I saw that just kind of a correction on the CG instead of GC.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this?
I move re-perform ordinance number 3014-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed. Thank you.
Item 10D, if approved, would be ordinance number 3015, and regulate property maintenance and property nuisance violations within the city of Garden City. Again, if approved, to be ordinance 3015-2025.
Mayor and Commissioners, good afternoon. For your consideration today, I was coming for you to update our property nuisance violation ordinance. As you know, or may be aware, we do have the International Property Maintenance Code adopted in this country. There's a, the background in this is at the April 15, 2025 City Commission pre-meeting, the governing body directed staff to bring back an ordinance that expedited the code enforcement process that would maintain final action being taken by the City Commission, but would eliminate the need for that action to be done in resolution form and eliminate the final 10 days previous given, previously given to the property owners after the City Commission took action on the abatement. At the subsequent Town Hall meeting on April 29th, the City Commission heard complaints about a property located within Garden City, and upon review, staff identified that the property did not have any code enforcement violations, but there were property maintenance violations present. However, due to the conflicting processes, additional revisions to the city code were added to pursue property maintenance violations. Proposed ordinance refers to the property maintenance notice process to the following, to follow the same process as code enforcement. The previous code indicated in one section that notice had to be at least 30 days, and another section it noted that it could not be more than 30 days, which only allows staff one day to provide the required notice to property owners. The proposed ordinance provides the necessary clarity to stream one code enforcement cases as well as clear out process to pursue property maintenance violations, which brings consistency across the processes. Your alternatives today, the governing body may approve the ordinance. Number two, the governing body may not approve the ordinance. Staff recommends the governing body approve the ordinance. In your package, you had two attachments. One is the marked up or edited version, and the other one is the clean version.
Any questions? Anybody have any comments from the public on this? Entertain a motion on this ordinance then.
I move the re-prov ordinance number 3115-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Item 10E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, which if approved, would be Resolution Number 3199-2025, in abate conditions at 1906 Van Zant.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioners. At 1906 Van Zant Street, a green four-door Dodge SUV and a green two-door truck are in violation of the Environmental Nuisance Code. Two notices were sent out, one on April 17, 2025, and the other May 8, 2025. We are unable to make in contact with the property owners or anyone residing in that residence. Alternatives today before you, number one, the governing body may approve the attached resolution, which allows staff to hate the nuisance. Number two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Recommendation, the staff recommends the governing body approve the attached resolution, and the fiscal note, abatement costs incurred by the city will be charged against the lot or parcels of the ground on which the motor vehicle nuisance is located.
Any questions? Anyone here for this item? Entertain a motion on this item?
I move re-approved Resolution Number 3199-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
The process for 10F through 10I are the same as described in the last item. We'll go through and read the resolution and identify the address. Mayor, if you want to see if there's anybody that wants to speak on those items, but there won't be a staff report unless you have any questions. 10F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, which if approved, would be Resolution Number 3200-2025, abating conditions at 1907 Walker Street.
Any questions? Anyone here for this item? None being, entertain a motion on this item?
Move that we approve Resolution Number 3100-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I believe that's 3200, if I missed earlier, sorry.
3200.
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Item 10G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, which if approved, would be Resolution 3201-2025, abating conditions at 2516 A Street.
Any questions on this item? Is there anybody from the public on this item? None being, entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 3201-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Item 10H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, which if approved, would be Resolution Number 3202-2025, in abate conditions at 2315 North 7th Street.
Commissioners, have a question on this item? Anybody from the public on this item? Entertain a motion on 3202-2025.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 3202-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
10I?
Yep.
10I, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, which if approved, would be 3203-2025, in abate conditions at 1907 Walker.
Any questions from the commission on this item? Is there anybody from the public on this item, concerning this item? Entertain a motion on 3203-2025.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 3203-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed. Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve signing the interlocal agreements between the city of Garden City and Finney County for the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Grants to close out the 2021 and 2023 grants. Chief.
He's making his way to come.
Yep.
Good afternoon. The governing body is asked to consider signing the interlocal agreement between the city of Garden City and Finney County from the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant to close out the 2021 grant. The 2021 Justice Assistant Grant was awarded and accepted in May of 2023 for the purpose of emergency communications equipment upgrade in the amount of $13,964. This 2021 grant requires a signed interlocal agreement between the city of Garden City and Finney County, in which the county agrees to allow the city to retain the county's share of $6,982. If the agreement is not signed, the awarded funds will not be received. The 2023 grant was awarded and accepted in March of 2024. The purpose of the emergencies, I'm sorry, the purpose of which was for purchasing emergency communications equipment upgrade in the amount of $14,395. This 2023 grant requires a signed interlocal agreement as well between the city of Garden City and Finney County, in which the county agrees to allow the city to retain the county's share of $7,197.50. If the agreement is not signed, the awarded funds will not be received. Alternatives before you, the governing body may not, I'm sorry, may approve the interlocal agreement, both interlocal agreements to close out the 2021 and 2023 grants. Number two, the governing body may not, may deny the interlocal agreements and provide further grants. Staff recommends the governing body approve the interlocal agreements to close out the 2021 and 2023 grants. And just as a side note, the county signed their, signed the interlocal agreement this week. Fiscal note, want sign the governing body for the city of Garden City and Finney County. The total of, if, if they're not signed, if the governing body chooses to not sign them, then that money will be turned back. If not, then we can, that closes the process we need to do to receive them. So I hope that answers some questions. And I will answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for chief?
Yeah, Chief, I did, I was, I was thinking we had to send the money back, or that it wasn't, it was unused portion. And so I appreciate you getting back and letting me know that it was, these are, you have to have these signatures in order to really access this dollar. So, no, that totally explained my question. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve the interlocal agreements to close out the two thousand and twenty-one and the two thousand and twenty-three grants.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thanks, chief.
Close enough to the one-thirty that by the time I read the preamble and you open it, it should be one-thirty, mayor?
Yes.
Ten A, one-thirty public hearing.
And make note that Commissioner Landgraf will be stepping down on this item.
Item ten A, a one-thirty public hearing. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance providing for the First Amendment to the Star Bond Project Plan for Sports of the World. And if this were to be approved, it would be ordinance number three zero one six dash twenty twenty-five.
Did you want to call in Mary Carson for us?
Yes. Hi, Mary. This is Matt Allen. We're in regular session of the City Commission. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. And Mary Carson, the City of Garden City's Bond Counsel with Triple Wolf Garrettson, is with us by phone. All right, Danielle, if you want to present the item?
Open the public hearing at this time.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. On October first of two thousand and twenty-four, the City Commission approved resolution number thirty-one thirty dash twenty twenty-four, declaring official intent to issue star bonds for Sports of the World Phase Two. This action was taken so that the developers could, at their own risk, begin to spend reimbursable funds on Phase Two, which would expand the district to include four softball fields, four baseball fields, and several areas for future development. It should be noted that the fields can also be used for soccer or flag football. On February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the City Commission held a public hearing and approved ordinance number three zero zero seven dash twenty twenty-five to expand the Star Bond District. The next step in the process is to hold today's public hearing on the amendment of the project plan, which describes the Phase Two improvements in the newly added area within the Star Bond District, and to consider ordinance number three zero one six dash twenty twenty-five, approving the project plan amendment. It should be noted that the Kansas Department of Commerce must also approve the project plan amendment. If approved, the next steps will include amending the development agreement and beginning the steps necessary to issue star bonds. There are two alternatives before you today. One, the governing body may approve ordinance number three zero one six dash twenty twenty-five, or two, the governing body may not approve resolution, or ordinance number three zero one six dash twenty twenty-five, and provide staff with alternative direction. Staff recommends the governing body approve ordinance number three zero one six dash twenty twenty-five. The fiscal note related to this item is that if the project receives all necessary approval by both the City of Garden City and the Kansas Department of Commerce, the city would issue special obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed that approved by the Department of Commerce to finance a portion of the project. With that, we have a couple of folks from the development team who are here to provide a more holistic presentation to you all about that, those amended, or those proposed amendments. So, we've got Mark Abbott and H. J. Swinder here to go through their presentation with you all, and then we can open it up for public comment, and those folks that are here to give some insight on this particular project. So, with that, I will hand it off to Mark and H. J.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commission members. Mark Abbott with Paulson Elliott, counsel for the developer.
The what? Which one?
I want to share a short presentation with you, and then just give some other comments.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Yeah, so some of this will be history that we've just covered. We're starting off with Phase One. Those bonds were issued back in, I believe, two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and twenty. That project for Phase One, the Sports of the World, we are targeting fourth quarter of this year for construction completion. So, that is just setting the stage for, that's the, the red boundary is the original Star Bond District area, the Phase One project that is, you know, now six years away in the city. So, next slide, please. So, this happened in expanding the Star Bond District. There's two main components of the Star Bond, of Star Bonds. There's, you have to create the district, and that is where the revenues generated therein will be collected, captured, and then there is the project. So, step one in doing a second phase, subsequent project, is to expand the district if needed to add more, add more areas. So, this is already, again, the red area is the original district, the kind of blue, purple area is the Phase Two project area. The district has already expanded, so that's the history. That's where we are today. Next slide, please. This is the Phase Two project. And without controlling the mouse, I may just walk over this. Excuse me, I'm tall, all right?
You're not tall enough.
I'm tall enough, too. Sure. So, so this is the two thousand and twenty-six components of the two ball field complexes. This essentially is what is going to be completed in two thousand and twenty-six. So, it's not a Phase One or a Phase Two, it's just as construction is scheduled and occurred. This is what we are scheduling to be completed in two thousand and twenty-six. An alter softball complex, an alter baseball complex, some RV bus parking along the side. But this is essentially the cross of what will happen first. The second of what will, again, all be constructed as part of a single phase, just as construction is scheduled, will be the soccer complex, a farmer's market, and then these items here, again, destination playgrounds, parking, additional restrooms. But this will essentially be the second part of what will be completed from the overall project. So, two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven, and then this entire area is what was added to the Star Bond District. So, yes, next, next slide, please. So, this is the Phase Two project budget. As you can see, there's three different columns. There are of the individual line items, the budget with significantly more individual line items is part of the project plan. This is a condensed version of that same budget, but it gives three different columns of descriptions of funds. So, we have a total of, these are the total project costs for each individual line that are included in the budget right now. We then have star bond eligible, meaning under the star bond statutes, under law, star bonds can be used to reimburse those amounts. So, that is not what will be paid, that is what is legally can be paid. Then we have star bond uses. That is how we are proposing to spend the star bond proceeds. So, the next phase, after consideration of this project plan amendment, if the commission, if the city were to choose to approve it, we would then move to a development agreement. So, the development agreement would be, we are obligated, as the developer, the developer is obligated to construct the project. If they do that, they then have a right to reimbursement from bond persons. So, the star bond uses are, what would we have a right to be reimbursed for? So, as you can see, the vast majority of the project reimbursements are going to be, well, actually, all of the reimbursements are going to be for improvements to the land. There is no, there's not requested, nor is there authorized reimbursement for land acquisition costs. The developer acquired the land years ago, but the developer is not asking for reimbursement for land acquisition costs that they have already paid. They will not have a right to do so. If you go down to the soft cost line items, you can see there's survey and just some standard, you know, site work, architecture and engineering, and then insurance. There are no developer fees that are broken out of several line item, developer is not taking developer fees as part of this project. Not only are they not taking it, but even if they were, the star bond uses column, they are not able to be reimbursed for developer, developer fees. So, that is not a part of this, this project at all. That is the Phase Two project. What it is, what the request would be under the project plan to be reimbursed. I'd also like to talk about, kind of take a step back and say, what are star bonds generally? So, again, as part of the process, the project plan is amended, development agreement considered, and hopefully approved, and then bonds are issued. Star bonds, we are not requesting as the developer team, and it will not be. Star bonds are a limited obligation of the city. Star bonds, what you do, you issue bonds, the bond buyers want to know, well, how are you going to pay me back? The bond buyer is going to be paid back by sales taxes that are captured within the district. That's it. No profit and taxes, there's no additional obligation of the city to, to do with the general fund. They are limited obligations of the city, secured solely by sales taxes that are captured within the district. So, from a bond buyer's perspective, the first, the first series of bonds that were issued, they had a twenty-year term, sales taxes that were captured significantly exceeded expectations, so they were paid back in, what, six, seven years? Six years. So, worst case, if, if they would not have been paid back at the end of the twenty-year term, if the bond buyers had not been paid back in full, that's the risk the bond buyers take. That's why they charge an interest rate, because that is the compensation for their risk. There is no liability to any of the other taxing jurisdictions, there is no liability to the city. There is no way, there is no legal way for the city to have an obligation to cover the costs of the bonds if there are insufficient funds to pay debt service. Another comment that is, can kind of be lost in how the overall process occurs, is that it is a local decision whether or not to approve a, to establish a star bond district, approve a star bond project, select a developer, execute a development agreement. It is very local intensive. The Department of Commerce, Kansas Department of Commerce plays a very large part in actually approving the projects, though, and that is the main reason being, the vast majority of sales taxes, the vast majority of revenues that are captured, that are used to pay debt service, are state funds in, 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 I don't know how, so Paulson Elliott does the majority of the star bond projects in the state. I've done, I don't know if that will be at this point. It usually works out to about ninety percent of the revenues that are captured to go to pay debt service are state funds. Those are not local dollars. If those state funds are not captured, they can be used for any purpose that the state, state uses in their budget. What the state and the Department of Commerce is doing, star bond projects, is saying, local community, would you like us to make an investment in your city? Would you like to participate in that investment? And in doing so, would you like the state to pay ninety percent of the costs for this project? Local community, would you like that benefit? That's what star bonds boil down to. If this project is not approved, those state revenues that are already being generated within the district, those sales taxes, because the first bonds have been, I think they were just paid off, maybe a month ago, those state revenues are going to go to Johnson County. Those state revenues are going to go to Cedric. Those state revenues are going to go somewhere else. This is the Department of Commerce's way of saying, we believe in this project, this fits the type of mission that we are trying to accomplish with star bond projects. Local community, Garden City, would you like this benefit where we pay ninety percent of the costs? And if you don't get those monies, those monies are not available for any other public services, they're not available for the schools, they're not available to improve streets, they are not lost revenues that the city already has a right to do. It is city, for this specific purpose, would you like us to pay ninety percent of the costs of this project? So, that is, star bond projects generally. H. J., a few comments, and will then be available for questions.
I just want to mention, while you're transitioning, we do have a one forty-five public hearing that we do have to start at one forty-five, so if I stop you in mid-sentence, that's why.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, commission staff. Appreciate the opportunity for you guys to look at this and believe in us, and I'm here on behalf of Stone Creek Station Foundation with Steve O'Grave and Aaron Zeller, other directors of that. As Mark is able to explain, the petition, some of the information spread on social media are...
It is now one forty-five, so let me stop. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
But we do have a public hearing at one forty-five that we have to go into.
Rest assured, we'll come back.
We will, yes, we will come back to this.
Let me get to the spot, sorry.
We do have a caller on the phone, too, so.
Mary, you good with hanging on? One forty-five, I'm sorry, item ten B, one forty-five public hearing. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance to vacate road easements within the City of Garden City. If approved, this ordinance would be three zero one six dash twenty twenty-five. That's the number I gave on the last one, but you hadn't reached the point to consider an ordinance, so the next ordinance in numerical order would be this item, should you take it up before. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. This ordinance in front of the governing body today is vacating road easements within the City of Garden City, Kansas, on real property.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
In the south of K-156, east of Mary Street, comprising former sections of East Mary Street and north Jenny Barker Road in Garden City, Kansas. So, the background is back in two thousand and eleven, when K, East K-156, Jenny Barker Road, East Mary Street intersection was realigned, as it is today, as part of the realignment project, the City of Garden City obtained a small remnant of, of tract of land, where half of the road easement lies within the two point nine six one acres owned by the city. The roadway surface of this former road was removed and has been utilized as a utility quarter since then. One half of the road easement lies within a three point five six acre tract, solely owned by Garden Grace Bible, and is presently used as part of the church campus. If approved today by the governing body, the small remnant of the land would be dedicated to Grace Bible by vacating this road easement, and the plating process and required deed will be considered after this ordinance adopted, if you approve this. And the existing utility easements that are there will still be retained. It includes, one, AT&amp;T Communications, two, Black Hills Energy, three, the City of Garden City, four, OX Communication, five, Idiata Telecom, six is Wheatland Electric Cooperative, and seven is Zayo. That all can be approved in the plating process. Under subsection A two of KSA twelve dash five oh five A, no private property, no private rights shall be injured or endangered by vacating a road easement. The public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by vacating the road easements, and see that vacation of the road easements ought to be granted to serve justice to the city's desire to relinquish unused remnant land acquired from a prior right-of-way acquisition, while simultaneously acquiring real property interests better suited to current needs, including but not limited to pedestrian trail sidewalks and utility corridors. And the alternatives, as the governing body could approve this ordinance, as presented at the point you made, you do not approve it, and the staff recommends you approve that ordinance.
Let me open the public hearing. Other item is that Commissioner Landgraf did step back on the bench for this item to be heard. Any questions from the commissioners on this item? Any public comment on this item? Close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve ordinance. I move to approve ordinance number thirty sixteen dash twenty twenty-five.
Thirty-one oh six?
Three zero one six dash twenty twenty-five is the... 3016 dash 2025 is the next number.
Yep, 31, 3016, sorry.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
That way our side of the bench misses that number.
Obviously, it's, yeah.
Thank you.
Yet noted that, uh, we're going back to the, uh, item 10A, and Commissioner Landgraf is, uh, stepping down again on this item. HJ, pick up where you left off, mid-sentence there?
Now, we're, we're back. Um, you know, unfortunately, some of the individuals promoting this misinformation have a personal interest in disparaging the project, and some of those working to get it done. Instead of focusing on that personal vendetta, I want to refocus on the original motivation for this project. We have been blessed in Garden City for many forward-thinking leaders and entrepreneurs that have helped shape our community. In my opinion, none are more significant than Cecil O'Grave. He had vision, generosity, and a desire to improve our community that was good to him. Throughout his life and now through his estate and foundations, Cecil poured over $130 million into this Starbond district alone. As a Starbond statutory requirement, state is required to do an independent feasibility study, and this was all part of the commission. I want to highlight just a few of the economic benefits that have been created by this project. One, Canyon Research says by 2029, total sales revenue inside the Phase Two district, just inside that district, will generate another $16.9 million per year. Another one, Canyon Research, uh, projects visitor attendance to our community from this project, 410,000 people annually. Third, this project just won't benefit the Starbond district, it'll benefit the entire community. They estimate an increased total economic revenue for the entire community outside the Starbond district to be $55.3 million in 2026, and $75.6 million in 2027. Visitor expenditures, sales tax outside the district are projected to bring in a new $372,000 a year just for Garden City, and $468,000 for Fannie County. None of these benefits listed above increase sales tax or property tax, and all of these add additional new revenue sources that we otherwise wouldn't receive. As Mark highlighted, this is a partnership with the state, where the state is saying, we believe in you, and we believe in putting 90% of the funds that, like you mentioned, could go to Johnson County, or our friends back east, but we believe in you, and we're going to invest in your community. To help give context on sports and sports tourism, it's one of the fastest-growing industries in the country. To highlight a few points, here's some national statistics. Sports account for a $52.2 billion in direct spending in sports tourism in the United States. Total economic impact of sports tourism in the United States is $128 billion, with a B. Sports tourism has contributed $20.1 billion in tax revenues across the United States. In 2023 alone, there are 204.9 million travelers in the United States that are going to sport events. 10% of all of the world's tourism is due to sports tourism. Right now, Garden City does not have a way to bring that large-scale tourism to the city. Adding these facilities to the community will further ensure that Garden City is an economic hub for western Kansas and the multi-state region. We're going to be bringing people from all over. One other thing that we look forward to with Stone Creek Station Foundation is working with our local, our local rec, our local CBB, our local schools, to help, give them an opportunity, give them a place, to separate them from others. The purpose of this investment is to benefit the youth and the development of the community. The purpose is not to line their own pockets, or the pockets of others who have seen Starbonds, to get themselves rich with no concern for the community. As Mark highlighted, there is no mechanism for developer fees or management fees to be collected, period. Stone Creek Station Foundation is the vehicle Cecil and his estate planning team designed to develop and manage the Starbond projects. The bylaws of Stone Creek Station Foundation provide that no director shall receive compensation. Any and all profits generated from Stone Creek Station Foundation, whether it be Phase One or Phase Two, will be directed back to scholarships, whether it be to the Overeem Foundation, directed back to kids, directed to youth development, and reinvested back in the community. Cecil viewed these projects as a way to attract and retain residents, workers, professionals, and families in Garden City in southwest Kansas. A way to attract visitors and families to our community. A way to grow our local economy and provide athletes entertainment opportunities for youth in southwest Kansas. He didn't pursue this project to make money. He pursued it out of generosity and his love for youth and his community, Garden City. We intend to carry on Cecil's legacy by fulfilling his vision to provide an asset that will benefit our community for generations to come. We appreciate the, uh, commissions and the staff's work on this. We, we're welcome to entertain any questions that might, uh, be generated from our presentation, and I want to leave it with like how Cecil said, let's make it happen.
I do have, uh, sign up, uh, I know Phil Escarino left the room. Public comment, yes? Uh, public comment, uh, first up on the list is Mike Russell.
Hi, everybody, I'm Mike Russell. Um, this is the second part of the Starbond deal that we was looking at here. You know, we haven't got Phase One done, and everybody's already talking about getting this Phase Two going. Right now, I don't know if any of you guys know of, like, what the motel situation is here in Garden City already? You can't get a motel room here during the week, usually. Um, you know, we've also got the bill of the taxes that just keep getting raised and raised around here, everybody's concerned about all of that. Um, like I said, the, the Starbond deal, to me, I think is, we've got enough baseball fields and stuff around here to start building more new ones, I don't know why we're not taking care of our old ones. That's something that should be concerned with elderly guys, not, you know, you guys want to go build all my new stuff, but our taxes just keep going crazy around here anyway, so. And I'm sick and tired of the taxes around here, I own multiple homes here, and, like I said, the taxes are just ridic, getting to be ridiculous here. I mean, we're having to fight them every year to, to try to keep our taxes down. If something like this right here just didn't raise our taxes more, and people get, like I said, people just get sick and tired of the tax stuff, so. But, like I said, the housing development around here, I think people need to put more money into housing development, you know? We making comments on, you know, everybody's making the deal about, uh, housing around here, anytime you put a house up, you gotta be a doctor to rent a house around here. Well, if you guys wasn't raising our taxes so much, and, um, making everything get so high around here, the rent wouldn't be so high. I think they need to get a Starbond deal for more housing, not baseball fields. Um, like I said, it's just getting ridiculous to me, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Up next on the list, Darla Sammy.
Darla Sammy, I wrote y'all a letter, um, and we had several, um, citizens sign that letter and bring it, and I just wanted to bring to you the corrected letter. I think there were, um, a couple of corrections that needed to make, make on it, and there were also, um, six or seven additional people that wanted to sign the letter. So, I, again, I do have a copy of the indication from each one of these individuals that they are signing the letter, so I did type out everything, so it'd be nice to meet, but, um, I want y'all to know that I have that available, if you want, I will leave this with you.
Okay, thank you. Judy O'Grave.
Hi, Judy O'Grave, and I'm not associated with this sports world, I get no benefits from it. Um, I don't think it matters if you give $10 million or $1, everybody has one vote. So I don't believe that should make what you decide, because somebody has given more money than somebody else. I also understand that the sports world, the total 68 million dollars in the, in the Starbonds, that's the highest in the state of Kansas. And I kind of resent the threat of, if we don't take it, then it goes to Wichita or Johnson. I kind of feel like that's a threat to me. I also believe that people have the right to understand who's going to reap from these benefits. Not everyone will be able to afford to do that. Why do we have to help people start a new business when we're trying to keep our business going? If you can't afford to build it, then don't build it, but I don't think it's your right to ask me to help pay for it. Even if I do benefit from it, I think 68 million dollars is a little bit too much. I don't want to see our city go bankrupt. I hear a lot of people moving because they can go pay taxes somewhere else a lot cheaper for the same house. They say this won't affect our houses, but it affects everything it touches. So if we're just going to increase groceries or goods, that affects everybody in this community. How many people in Garden City understand that these Starbonds are costing them? I think that it is the responsibility of this committee to let everybody know who will reap from these benefits. So, I am definitely not pleased.
Thank you. Leo, uh, I can't read your last...
Ladesma?
Yes. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay, I didn't write it real good.
That's okay.
My name is Leo Ladesma, and, uh, did I hear that Cecil O'Grave already had put 120 million in that Starbonds? What happened to that money?
No, he said it was put into the community.
I thought it said Star, I thought it said Starbonds, and he said that. But I know he did put a lot of money into it.
Into the Starbonds, into the... HJ, could you clarify, please?
Yes, sir. Um, when this, uh, between Phase One and the additional developments in there, he had put $130 million in just that district, not outside of all the employees and businesses and stuff, just that district.
What happened to that money? It's, it's gone.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyway, I know a lot of people want a lot of new stuff, and like, the previous people have been saying, it's cost of living, and then you have the merchants down Main Street, and they're having a hard time, uh, paying their bills, because everyone I go into, they say it's getting higher, and then, as that cost's already figured in, or is it going to be another cost addition? When they find out, when they start buying the materials, the tariff cost's going to kick in, and what's going to happen to that? Are they going to raise another, uh, certain amount of money later on, and then say, well, we're behind, so it's not going to, uh, start creating any funds? When did he say that it would start creating funds? When did he say start generating funds? I didn't have paper or anything. Did he say in 2026?
No, the, the first district, the first bonds were already paid off, and...
What did that pay for?
The, phase, that paid for Phase One.
A portion of Phase One.
A portion, did he say a portion of it?
Yeah.
What's about the other portion of the Phase One?
Private element?
It was, yes, it was a private investment. It's how, it's how it works.
So basically, when is it going to be operational?
He said fourth quarter.
Yeah, this year.
Fourth quarter? I mean, when, when, when are people are going to be able to go in there and, and use it?
It's going to be operational at the fourth quarter of this year, end of this year.
Fourth quarter this year?
Yes.
And when will it start trading funds?
Well...
By the fourth quarter?
Okay. Probably when it opens up.
That's what I said, when, when is it going to open up? Do they have an opening date?
It'll be opening the fourth quarter of this year.
An opening date?
You'd have to ask him.
An opening date?
Is, is this, the, just clarifying for public, is, questions from the public to the developers, is that how public hearings typically occur?
No.
There's a lot of addressing the bottom.
Thank you. It's, it's just public comment at this point. It's not, it's not questioning the developer.
Well, what I'm saying is that they can always do that, uh, opening date later on, so that they don't have things done. That's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
They can drag it on, and that's our money. And if you say, well, the state's paying it, who pays the state's tax? We do. We pay the state tax, too. That's all.
Thank you. I think Bernie left. Cruz?
I don't think that he...
You already talked, okay. Steven Bennett?
My name is Steve Bennett, and, one of the reasons I'm here today is because my property tax has done nothing but go up. Now, this man says that his project will pay X amount of thousands of dollars. If that's true, then why can't a bank rely on a note that his income would pay for this project? Here's what I've seen in the past. I have checked other towns, and they have a lower tax rate. In 2023, our dear governor said that we have a billion, $23 billion in state revenue. We were set good. If we have that much money, why aren't we going for a grant through the state? The other thing is, is that, uh, I, I poured cement this year, for an extra park, and got rid of the gravel, and through the contractors, I said, uh, this is not going to raise much of taxes. Oh, no, no, it won't raise your taxes, not at all. And I said, well, if you do, if they are, I don't want any for it. So, anyway, they poured it, my taxes went up. Neighbor's got a house just like mine, just exactly the same square foot and everything. His taxes were $600, mine went up $1,200. So now I'm paying at the rate of $5,000 a year. I've worked two jobs most of my life just to get where I'm at. 9/11 came along, and they took a lot of our IRAs, if you remember. You know, a lot of people only came out of those IRAs with a third of what they had. And then, you know, you people keep putting stuff, uh, building stuff, like our ambulance barn and our new, uh, fire, uh, station. $50 million, is that correct? Is what that cost, what did that cost?
This is your time, this is your time to comment.
But, okay, but anyway, you know, there was other property that could have been bought and used, and not paid millions of dollars for that. The DNH Motel Home Place was available at one time for $8 million, could have been used for a fire station. But, you know, it appears that we, we don't use, uh, a way to bring in taxes. You know, I, I'll tell you this much, uh, a lot of our taxes come from other counties when they buy stuff here. And, and there's, uh, I, I wouldn't care whether they sold beer on Saturday night or Sunday morning, but if they had a, a deal where they could get their beer in Walmart at, uh, Sunday afternoon, they'd raise a lot of taxes. I mean, if they want to drink, that's their problem, you know? But, anyway, what I'm saying is, we are not using our ideas of, of raising money for taxes. There's a lot of things that we could use, like a penny tax, instead of raising everybody's taxes on their properties. You know, I was told that property tax was, uh, accumulated by sales. There's two houses down from me, they've been on the market for 200, or 320,000 for about a year now, neither one of them sold. So now, they raised mine another 15,000, so I can get it there, so I can pay the same taxes as what they are. I'll make it right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Jackson?
Thank you, folks. My name is Ben Jackson. I'm from Scott City, and I'm an attorney. And I'm not representing anyone here today. I'm affiliated with Cecil Obrad before his passing. He was a client of mine. I just wanted to come down here because I'm one of those folks from out of the county that this gentleman just referenced. I come down here and I vote with my tax dollars. I go to Menards because I know Menards. A portion of everything I pay there, instead of it going to Johnson County or Topeka or to Wichita for their sporting complexes or for their roads or for what being, comes right back here. As these gentlemen said, 90% of that money on those taxes that would otherwise go other places get returned to the community. And I do appreciate that. And I have kids that are eight years old. And hopefully, one day, if this opens in the fourth quarter, the fifth quarter, or whatever it may be, I can bring them down here. And while I go shopping at Menards, they can take advantage of this. And I just want this commission to know that they have a unique position and a unique gift. There's a lot of communities, mine as well, that are jealous of the position that you guys are in. You have the opportunity to bring tax dollars that are already being spent. Your community's dollars can keep it here local. And I'd ask that you guys just take that into consideration, and us outsiders support you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for a note, I know 35 people who have residencies that are talking about Menards.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Betsy Roberts? Hello?
My name is Betsy Roberts. And I don't have a vendetta against anybody. And I'm actually the one that started all of this. I don't have any business with them. I involved because of the thing that happened with the sports complex back east with the Chiefs. And I did a lot of research and stuff with the Star Bonds. And anyway, there's conflicting opinions in here. There are two articles here that talk about two of the different Star Bonds that are in the state that did not meet their expectations. I also have an audit from the state that, from the legislators, talking about.
Can you do it that way, please?
14 different Star Bond bonds in 2000.
You need to, you need to speak at the mic, please, for our listening audience.
The audit was done in 2021. It was about the 14 Star Bonds that are currently in the state. After they were done doing their audit, they had decided, I can't remember, if it's two or three, only met their goals. That's where my concern is, okay? Like I say, I don't have a vendetta against them. I don't even know them. I've never even met them. But I do know that, you know, the Star Bonds is basically gotten the excess revenue that they generate is what is the pot that we're actually working on. I got all my figures from an economist that I visited with. And he came up, he did a research on eight years of income that we have received with sales tax. And in those eight years, he had averaged it, and it's 3.4% annually that is in that pot that we can grow from. The Star Bonds are basically paid off by the growth of the sales tax. So that ended up to about $59 million. They say a portion of their amount was paid off. But my question is, how many more people are paying off that $59 million? I know that, did Menards use it? Who else in that Star Bond district is using that amount of money? So basically, I think I can think of a lot of projects in the city that we have not addressed or taken care of. You know, the sales tax, you know, could be funding that. I mean, look at our police station, you know, it's, it needs to be fixed. There's a lot of things in the city that need to be fixed. I don't believe that this amount of money needs to be given to someone that isn't actually benefiting the city. Yes, it is in sales tax. But you know what? That sales tax doesn't benefit me. You know, with them making all this money with the business, their business isn't benefiting me. I know that we added to our, the 5% sales tax that we voted on recently, this last year, the 0.5, the half a cent sales tax that we voted on to ask if we would add to it. It's because we're short in our property tax. So we wanted to burn in our sales tax funds to be able to, what am I talking about?
Yeah, go ahead.
So anyway.
It's public comment, so go ahead.
So anyway, so the amount of money, I mean, if we're short in money, we shouldn't be, you know, taking it for one pot or whatever. But yeah, it's okay if we take a huge amount because the amount of money that I had, the first one is $29.5 million for Phase One. Phase Two is $38.5 million that is being asked for. I just ask that you consider how it affects the normal people in this town when you're not spending that sales tax money to do what it's supposed to be doing, which is helping the city. But instead, we're giving it to an entity to use our organic dollars. So anyway.
Thank you. Roxanne Lansing?
Hi, Roxanne Lansing, Executive Director of the Commission Insurance of Europe. So I probably have a different perspective a little bit from everybody out here, being a 30-year resident and also being the entity charged for recruitment and development of leisure hospitality dollars in this community. Being used such as this puts us in a very unique position. We do currently have great facilities through the RAC. We do utilize those to the point where sometimes the community doesn't get to us on because we're hosting tournaments. Sometimes also, I want you to know that those tournaments, those two-day tournaments, on average, bring in $100,000 and even will become a part of it to our community. So as I'm hearing that that's not helping us, those leisure and hospitality dollars, as you know, are outside dollars. They have no welfare benefit. They have no hospital costs. They have no housing costs. They have no education costs. They are 100% for us to use as we see fit. And so as I'm hearing that we're not adding to the sales tax base, yes, we are. And we're doing it in a way that saves the property taxpayers money. The more sales tax, Jim, that we can generate, absolutely, it is easier to keep our property taxes down. This facility gives us the opportunity to be a unique location in Western Kansas, not only in Western Kansas, but the state. When I'm looking at this facility and I'm thinking about how I'm going to sell this, I have the opportunity to utilize this facility with two championship builds. And then if I have a rain, and as we all know, when you're in an outdoor facility, that's always going to be an issue. I now have across that district the opportunity to finish those tournaments indoors. That is not an opportunity that a lot of facilities are given. Not only does that facility then accommodate me that way, when I'm doing that, they still set a tournament down, that means somebody's, and now I'm just spending a little more time in my community, in your restaurants, in your businesses, in your hotels. That is what we do in my office. We want those outside dollars to come in and benefit those taxpayers. Everybody in my office lives in this community, and everybody in my office pays those same property taxes that everybody else is paying. We don't like it either. But we understand the value of those leisure and hospitality dollars that make any investment to create those revenue streams. So as it stands, as CDB Director, I am in favor of this project. And I appreciate, I would stand for any questions that you guys may have of me at any time. My door is open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Roxanne was the last one on the list for signing up to speak. Any other public comment?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I'm not actually here to speak on behalf of this project, but I do think it's important to speak on behalf of the tool, the Star Bond tool. As it gets used, there has been a lot of misinformation. Some of that shared here today, some of that that folks have reached out to our office and asked clarifying questions about posts they've seen on social media. So I think it is important that people understand what the Star Bond tool actually does. So again, this is not in support of this specific project, but the tool. So sales tax revenue bonds are utilized in Kansas. They have been, they were approved back in the 90s. And we originally built the Speedway, which was the project that they made the enhancements to that bill to allow that to take place. So I've heard some comments that it costs our taxpayers. We have to charge extra sales tax. We do not charge extra sales tax related to the Star Bond. There is no extra tax charge when you shop at Menards or any of the other shelling and crossing stores. So that's one of the things I think people need to be aware of. Additionally, when there's been comments that this would make it the largest Star Bond district in the state of Kansas, that actually also does not bear out. So of the Star Bonds out there, this would be the fifth largest, even in its entirety. A portion of those have already paid off. The Children's Mercy paid off back in 2016. That project was $150 million. So this is not a huge number when we're looking at what Star Bonds are. I saw some comments that Dock City's district was only $2 million. That's not accurate either. Dock City actually has two Star Bond districts. One is over $13 million, the other is nearly $16 million. So that's not accurate either. But I think what's most important to mention, we talk in percentages, and that's important. It's good to hear 90% paid for by the state. But I think the real numbers would be helpful for our public to understand also. So so far, collections for our district in Garden City.
Lana, could you hold for just a moment? There's somebody talking over. If you have public comment, then you'll have your chance. But Lana Dival is now presenting, and so it's really, we're trying to pay attention. So if you're talking over her, then that's not going to work for us. As a commissioner, as a group, we want to make sure we honor the people speaking at the mic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Enner.
So 89.8% of our revenues have been the state portion of that sales tax. Just assuming that the sales don't continue to grow. They have grown. You all see those numbers. The sales tax has continued to grow in the Star Bond district. But even if we just assume that it flatlines at the 2023 number, which is the last report that we have out from the Department of Commerce, if it flatlined there, the state would be paying $61,99,920 of the 68, roughly, million-dollar project that we're talking about. To the point earlier that those dollars would go elsewhere. That's not a threat. Those dollars will go elsewhere. If we're not utilizing those dollars to pay for a project that will help our community grow, those dollars will go to Topeka. They will go to the General Fund. It does not take much to look around and recognize that we don't guarantee any of those funds come back to us. Once they go to the General Fund, we don't have a lot of say over where those dollars go. I think it's pretty clear when we look at our highway systems out here, our university systems out here, we know those dollars are not equally getting spent back in our region. So I think it's important to know that that's not, that's not trying to be pushy or threatening in any way. It's just simply the truth. This tool is an opportunity for our community to leverage the state's commitment to us growing tourism and visitorship. When we did the original Star Bond feasibility study, they estimated we would have a million visitors overall, including the retail and the attraction that we were proposing to build at that time. The attraction is not even completed, and we're already over 3 million visitors a year to our Star Bond district. That is significant to this community. That means something. Not only does it mean that we're getting those in free sales tax collections, it also means those folks are doing business outside the Star Bond district. And while I understand that folks are concerned about their property taxes, and I absolutely understand that, there's not really a nicer way to say that this project would not change that. The things that they're seeing in property taxes are completely unrelated to this. And quite frankly, when we talk about comparisons to other communities, we have to be mindful of the fact that we have a community college to support when many other communities across the state of Kansas do not. I, for one, am glad to support a community college because it gives us a lot of other benefits. But it's not fair to judge this tool by other economic conditions. So that's all I wanted to share is that this tool is important to us. The developers who choose to do business in Garden City and Finy County are important to us. And we certainly don't want them getting the idea that this community does not support economic growth and opportunity because that is what has set us apart for the last 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Any commissioners have any questions or comments?
Hi, I have, I have comments too. And I just want to thank you all for coming in and explaining, HJ and your group, Paul Sinelli. This really does help us understand kind of the possibilities for southwest Kansas, not just Garden City, but our surrounding communities as well. So we all have kids. We all have those desires for them to succeed in areas where we didn't. I know some of that is personal on my level as far as living through my kids' dreams, or my dreams through my kids. But this definitely does give them that access to options to excel in their sports. But it's not only sports. You got to look at this as a, as a Star Bond generating tool for helping all of the community and all of the businesses here in southwest Kansas. Because when you talk about visitors and tourism, those communities outside of our community are coming in, and not just the surrounding local communities, but you're talking about Colorado communities. You're talking about Oklahoma communities, Nebraska communities. And so it's not just Kansas. And so this really helps those who are small shops. I've got a small shop. But it helps those dollars go to that business. It helps their businesses because they go out to eat. They're going to go to walk-ons. They're going to go to Buffalo Wild Wings. They're going to go to all of these restaurants that we have. And yes, those investors did put that money into the community. So we appreciate, no matter who the investor is, we appreciate those investors that are investing in Garden City and southwest Kansas. And so when you look at that, I believe that this is a great opportunity for us to gain such valuable resources like this so that our community can thrive and become a better, accessible community in southwest Kansas. So I appreciate all the comments. You guys kind of stole my thunder when you presented all the information. So I was ready to have all that said here. But no, I really, really thank you for doing that and the foundation for investing in the community. So that's all I have to say.
Any other commissioners? You want to go first?
Yes, yeah, that's fine. You know, so I was thinking about Cecil Obrad. And I, you know, I didn't know him personally. I've met him several times, but I didn't have the chance to know him personally. But oftentimes, you know, you look at not what people say, but what they do. And the thing about Cecil Obrad is what he did was he made Garden City a standout community, and he continued and still continues today in perpetuity to invest in young people and in our kids. You know, a lot of people, this idea that what benefits me or me personally, you know, sometimes it's, the thing about Cecil is he invested in people knowing that the value of our youth and the things, the opportunities to bring people here was going to be the difference. I can't tell you how many probably millions of dollars in scholarships and how much oftentimes he supported people, even when times like a time and they could give nothing back. You know, this opportunity for the Star Bond, I think it is, I think it's, you know, it's been said I don't know how many times, and yet it kept being repeated. These dollars are not additional tax dollars. These are dollars of the state of Kansas. These dollars will come, either they're going to be used here or they're going to be used somewhere else. Now, I'm not, I have nothing against eastern Kansas, but I really like, I live in western Kansas, and I'd sure like to see some money come out here. You know, oftentimes, when we deal with these opportunities, you know, there are not, there are not many people who are willing to step up and say, hey, this is something. people who are willing to step up and say, hey, this is something that's really valuable for us as a community and to take the risk. You know, so many people are worried about this business. It's their business. It's a personal business. It's not owned by the taxpayers, and it's not owned by the city of Garden City. It's owned by the foundation, is it Stone Creek Foundation? It's owned by Stone Creek Foundation, and it's their make it or break it. But I'll tell you, their make it or break it is going to make a difference for, I can't tell you how many thousands, hopefully hundreds of thousands of youth if Garden City continues the way it is. You know, we as a city have continued to grow because we are willing to step out and make some decisions that are sometimes risky as far as the Starbond district, making those dollars, making the district available. I'm going to tell you, we have a lot of big box stores that you go out to Menards on the weekends, and you're going to see more cars from out of our city and even out of our state parked in that parking lot than you're going to see in, from Garden City. You know, as far as, you know, we talked a lot about, I love the comments on the other things about the property tax, and these would really be good comments on other issues, especially when we're getting ready to talk about the budget. That's really the place to present these. But the Starbond issue, it's already been stated, it has nothing to do with property tax. And you can believe that or not, but it has nothing to do with property tax. There are five taxing entities in Garden City, and all of us are working hard to make sure that we make this a standout city. You know, we've made some huge investments. You as taxpayers, we as taxpayers have made huge investments to make sure that Garden City continues to grow. But if we don't continue to make decisions, I'll tell you what, we can end up like several other small cities who only can have to come to Garden City to get absolutely everything. So as far as the Starbond, you know, I really appreciate the public comment. This is the thing that as commissioners, you know, we are here for because, again, listening to the public is really what adds the benefit. And it helped us clarify, really, to ask the hard questions, to make sure that this decision, you know, when we make this decision, that we have all of the information. So I appreciate the letter. I thought the letter was well-written. It gave me an opportunity to research and talk about it. I really appreciate the organization of all the signatures and the people who understand, and hopefully that people, as they heard the presentation today, that they're open-minded enough to know that, hey, some of these things that I thought were true or that I thought were the way it was has really changed. So I hope that we as commissioners are always going to be open to public comment, and I hope that those who presented their information are also open to hopefully clarification and a greater understanding of what's really at stake and what's the availability for opportunity for the Starbond. I really appreciate the way that, you know, this community is, really sticks together. There are so many things that we as a community have been able to do because we believe not only in one another, but we believe in the viability of western Kansas. And I'll tell you, western Kansas, in order for us to survive, we have to continue to step out and to step up and to do things that make sure that we can bring people out here so we can showcase not our stuff, but that we can showcase our way of life and the people of western Kansas. I'm going to tell you, there is no greater place to live. I love going back east and visiting those people because I'll tell you what, we are the best advertisement for western Kansas and for Garden City. And so every time that we do something that really brings people out here, they not only understand our hospitality, but also this is the way people treat other people. So I really appreciate the respectful, the conduct during the public comment. I really, I thank you for all of the information and the letters and the notes and the texts, everything that's sent in because it makes everything better. It makes a decision more well-rounded. So I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate the time.
May I ask you a question?
Not at this time.
Yeah, yes, please. Yeah, thank you so much for offering your busy Tuesday afternoon to come here and offer your thoughts. Thank you especially to Roxanne for leading charge on the case that you're making. And I would really, really appreciate for you guys to know that they're not falling on false ears. I do have a couple of questions for staff, just real fast. First, on page five, there is the tax revenue subject to capture. Kind of just a quick, maybe one minute or even 30 seconds to kind of break down what that looks like, what that means, to give us a better, a clearer picture of what is dedicated to the Starbond from our sales tax.
In the First Amendment?
Yes, you betcha. I'll start. Hopefully you guys can hear me. I'll start with that as Matt goes down to the chart that I think, yep, that one that you're referencing.
Yes.
So this is a chart in the Project Plan Amendment, and it speaks to which portion of the sales tax is going to be utilized for the purposes of capturing the sales tax generated within the Starbond district. So to kind of walk you through that chart, you've got the list of the taxing jurisdictions. The tax rate of each of those jurisdictions, so here in Garden City, our tax rate is 8.95%. And then the proportion of that tax that will go back to pay back the Starbonds that are issued should this project continue. So as you can see, that's where you are able to see that the state of Kansas has a tax rate of 6.5%. 100% of that is going back to pay back those special obligation bonds. You can see that the general Finney County sales tax, which is a 1% sales tax, 24% of that is going and would be dedicated for this purpose. So again, not the full, not the full portion of that sales tax, but a portion of that unobligated sales tax. Finney County, this is a dedicated sales tax, a 0.3%. That is not impacted, so those revenues that are generated by that 0.3% will continue to be used for those purposes. City of Garden City, half of our 1% sales tax would be dedicated to this project. And like I mentioned before, the portion for the airport project would not be impacted by this. So you see 7.24% of the 8.95% of the sales tax proceeds generated from that district are what then go back to help pay those special obligation bonds for this particular project.
Thank you.
Commissioner, one other variable on that. It would be the increment after December 14th, or I'm sorry, December 2014, the date of the district's creation. There was a 12-month look back. Any revenues generated prior to December 2014 established the baseline. So much like the rural housing incentive district or commercial TIFs that you've issued, there's a baseline that's established. And so the capture is the capture of the increment, not the capture of everything generated there. For context or for memory purposes, Menards opened in October of 2013, and I think around August, September of 2014, Dick's Sporting Goods and maybe Hobby Lobby opened. So there's, in the baseline of that district, there does exist an increment that's pretty significant because it had the first year of Menards in it. It also had a piece of the Phase Two of Schulman Crossing in it. So yeah, again, the unobligated portion of the city's sales tax and then the state of Kansas' sales tax is above, that capture is above the baseline increment.
Thank you. And I think, sorry, I think we did have another letter during public comment. I don't know if it's printed now or after my comment. I think we do it right after my comment, if that's okay. City Clerk, thank you. And then my follow-up question to that is, I can't remember correctly if Schulman Crossing has a CID in there, or I can't remember if that's the case. And I think, like, for example, Garden City Plaza has a CID. And so like, when we go to Garden City Plaza, just a semantic joke here, my mother was complaining that she saw it was 9.95%. And yes, that's the case because there's a CID district that we've signed for over a decade, I think, and then got renewed.
Correct.
So those are some good contexts. All of this to say that a lot of the emotions that are rooted against the Starbond, I think, are fair and they're understandable. I do think that it is worth to understand where all of it comes from because sometimes, even for me, it's very quick for me to point to Z because of all the events of A, B, and C all the way through without really kind of getting the clear picture that they're correlated. For example, the city, the mill levy for the city has not changed. The valuations have changed, and that is definitely not a city issue. That is a county issue. That is completely separate. So in the eyes of the commissioners, we've done our exact best, and we have, and staff have labored over the fact that they are falling short on so many projects because we've decided to work hard to keep the mill levy flat for the city. Obviously, that's not the case for other taxing entities within where we live. Additionally, when I, another anecdote, when I worked as in concessions at Garden City Wind, there were some tough days when, if you've ever been to the bathrooms, if you've ever been, or tough days of knowing that, oh, we can't be at Clint Lightner because there's a rec tournament. So we actually had to go and hop in at the community college field for a week. And things like that are really difficult because, like, GC Wind really had to move everything out of their concession stand so that Garden City Rec could move in. And so sometimes it does seem like we have enough fields or it should be the priority of the community or of the city to update those fields, which rightfully so could be the case, but that would definitely mean that we would have to raise the mill levy. Like, there's not enough revenue for the city for us to update these fields. We would have to raise the mill levy, and then much more people would come back and be angry at us for raising the mill levy and raising property taxes. All this to say again that projects like these don't come, aren't a burden for us. It seems that case for sure, but it is only a burden in that district, and other sales tax are captured in that district. If you go to Dylan's, none of that is going towards the Starbond. If you go to Walmart, none of that is going to the Starbond. It's only in that district, wish of case, would have gone to the general fund of, at the state level, and that could fund X, Y, and Z that you definitely might not agree with either. So that's really it. Thank you.
So just so clarification, so the Starbond district is commonly known as Schulman's Crossing, all of the businesses in that, and that does not include Sam's or Home Depot or anything else on that side. Is that correct, Matt?
The map from the developer's presentation, this is, I think, slide two of that, shows the original Starbond district boundaries. Earlier in this process, an earlier step of this process, I believe it happened in 2024, the commission considered an expansion of the district. Maybe it happened at the first part of 2025, but in a previous meeting, the commission considered an expansion of the district. So now we have a bifurcated district, and this is an eligible district for the sports of the world Starbond by name, the same Starbond that has been authorized and for which the Phase One bonds were issued and should they be approved for which you could spend, or there could be issued additional bonds. It includes Schulman Crossing, the Stone Creek Development. Should the property develop here, it's kind of frontage off of Jenny Barker Road, and should that develop into a sales tax generator, that would be included. Of course, where there's going to be taxable sales that happen within the refinery, which is the Phase One feature project, and there's a restaurant plan to be built there, those sales taxes generated would be above the baseline and within the district and would be captured for any additional bonds. The property over here is owned by the college. If there's sales taxes generated over there, they would be subject to this too, but that's virtually nothing. If the property were to, you know, sell or redevelop or something like that, it could be used. Publicly owned land can't be used for Starbond attractions. So right now, that's just sort of, that was in the district originally to give maximum flexibility to where feature facilities might be located. This is actually before even the existing developer came and proposed their project. Don't really anticipate anything happening west of the bypass.
I would also like to say one more thing. This is a tremendous benefit to a school right next to there, Garden City High School. In high school, I also managed for softball, and then plenty of my friends played baseball. So I think you'd be surprised at the many accidents it'd take to go from the high school to Clint Lightner, especially after traffic, but also tremendously the impact of these sports for them to be able to benefit potentially in partnership with the athletic director and the organization to have them practice there instead of having to drive all the way across town.
I think to kind of add on to that, with the high school being so close to that, I'm hoping that they have an agreement or some sort worked out to where sports could access this area. This eliminates some risk taken by our kids and students that are actually at the high school who have to travel that highway all the way down to either Tangeman Ball Field or the baseball team that goes all the way down to Clint Lightner or the cross-country team who travels all the way down to Buffalo Dunes to practice or to get their exercises in. So I see that relationship as a benefit for our students and their safety for this development in this area as well. So thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that this is not a stadium or arena. This is really, these are youth, these are youth sports facilities. So some of the Starbond things that were referenced earlier are, some of those have a deal. But these are really youth, youth sports facilities, and that's a lot different. And if you look at the, you know, just doing research on those, youth sports facilities really are, they are the next generation of moneymakers for lots of places. You know, a lot of people here travel all over, and so now we're going to have them people travel to Garden City, Kansas.
I know, any other comments? I know Commissioner Wind brought up that there was a letter presented to us in support of the Starbond funds, being noted that it's a letter from Kevin Vaskew in support of supporting the Starbond project moving forward. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Entertained a motion then on 10A on ordinance 3017-2025.
I'm sorry, what was the ordinance number again?
3017-2025.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 3017-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I'd like to thank the community for coming and participating in the public, open discussion. Would the commission, we want to move forward or would we want to take a?
Yeah, we need a break.
10-minute break. Do we want to make it 10 minutes or make it 5 minutes?
Seven, maybe in the middle?
Yeah. Eight?
Eight's great. Eight, nine?
Just 10.
10's fine.
Sorry, you took over.
No, you've already had a break, Bryce.
We're going to take a 10-minute, we're going to, the commission's going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back in session at 2:57.
2:57.
And continue the next item at 12B from there.
So, nothing on the purchase other than just to ask her as far as the substation? Is that something that we're looking at in subsequent years of doing, or is that something that's already been planned that we're going to put on this property?
Yes, we've had that planned for some time. Quite a while back, we've had this worked out, and things slowed down, so now we're ready to move forward.
Bill, do it. Okay. Yeah, I recommend that. I, motion that we approve the real estate purchase agreement for 68,550 dollars. There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I'd like to thank the community for coming and participating in the public, open discussion. Would the commission, we want to move forward, or would we want to take a?
Yeah, we need a break.
A 10-minute break. Do we want to make it 10 minutes, or make it 5 minutes?
Seven, maybe in the middle?
Yeah. Eight?
Eight's great. Eight, nine?
Just 10.
10's fine.
Sorry, you took over.
No, you've already had a break, Bryce.
We're going to take a 10-minute. The commission's going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back in session at 2:57.
2:57.
And continue the next item at 12B from there.
[inaudible]
No, you've already had a break, Bryce.
We're going to take a 10-minute. The commission's going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back in session at 2:57.
2:57.
And continue the next item at 12B from there.
[inaudible]
So, nothing on the purchase other than just to ask her as far as the substation? Is that something that we're looking at in subsequent years of doing, or is that something that's already been planned that we're going to put on this property?
Yes, we've had that planned for some time.
Okay.
Quite a while back, we've had this worked out, and things slowed down, so now we're ready to move forward.
Bill, do it. Okay. Yeah, I recommend that, I, motion that we approve the real estate purchase agreement for 68,550 dollars.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you. We'll wait for Commissioner Landgraf to come back to the bench. All right. Item 12D.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the First Amendment to the Planned Unit Development Plan for Prairie View Acres located near the southwest corner of the intersection of North Campus Drive and U S Highway 50.
May I ask, commissioners, CG Investments LLC requests women, the Planned Unit Development Plan for Prairie View Acres. The original PUD plan was adopted on June 5th, 2018, which consisted of detached single-family homes with a zero-watt line along the north side of Prairie View Drive and attached single-family homes along the south side of Prairie View Drive. The developers, CG Investments LLC, intends to sell 31 lots to German Homes Inc., where the builder intends to build smaller detached single-family homes over two years. Due to the narrow watts, the entire development has a PUD. However, the north side of Prairie View Drive has a zero-watt line overlay as well, which allows homes to be built on the property line on one side and a 10-foot setback on the other. German Homes Inc. has designed smaller homes that do not meet the zero-watt line overlay. If the rezone and the PUD plan amendment are approved, the homes designed by German Homes Inc. will be allowed to be built. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the First Amendment to the Planned Unit Development Plan for Prairie View Acres, or the governing body may not approve the First Amendment to the Planned Unit Development Plan for Prairie View Acres. Staff recommends the governing body approve the real estate purchase agreement for 68,550 dollars. And approved today, the 68,550 dollars will come from the electric department's 2025 budget. It's in the same line item, you can just authorize the purchase of that other property, and the revised, the 2025 budget will be provided to reflect this additional purchase with it as well. And I would ask for any questions on that.
Any questions for Mike on this item?
So, nothing on the purchase other than just to ask her as far as the substation? Is that something that we're looking at in subsequent years of doing, or is that something that's already been planned that we're going to put on this property?
Yes, we've had that planned for some time.
Okay.
Quite a while back, we've had this worked out, and things slowed down, so now we're ready to move forward.
Bill, do it. Okay. Yeah, I recommend that, I, motion that we approve the real estate purchase agreement for 68,550 dollars.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you. We'll wait for Commissioner Landgraf to come back to the bench. All right. Item 12D.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the First Amendment to the Planned Unit Development Plan for Prairie View Acres located near the southwest corner of the intersection of North Campus Drive and U S Highway 50.
May I ask, commissioners, CG Investments LLC requests women, the Planned Unit Development Plan for Prairie View Acres. The original PUD plan was adopted on June 5th, 2018, which consisted of detached single-family homes with a zero-watt line along the north side of Prairie View Drive and attached single-family homes along the south side of Prairie View Drive. The developers, CG Investments LLC, intends to sell 31 lots to German Homes Inc., where the builder intends to build smaller detached single-family homes over two years. Due to the narrow watts, the entire development has a PUD. However, the north side of Prairie View Drive has a zero-watt line overlay as well, which allows homes to be built on the property line on one side and a 10-foot setback on the other. German Homes Inc. has designed smaller homes that do not meet the zero-watt line overlay. If the rezone and the PUD plan amendment are approved, the homes designed by German Homes Inc. will be allowed to be built. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the First Amendment to the Planned Unit Development Plan for Prairie View Acres, or the governing body may not approve the First Amendment to the Planned Unit Development Plan for Prairie View Acres. Staff recommends the governing body approve the First Amendment to the Planned Unit Development Plan for Prairie View Acres, and there is no fiscal impact by approving the First Amendment to the PUD plan for Prairie View Acres.
Any questions for Alicia? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the First Amendment to the Planned Unit Development Plan for Prairie View Acres.
Yes, Mayor Fishers. On August 4th of 2024, the governing body approved a professional services agreement with SCS Engineers of Wichita, excuse me, to perform a cost-of-service study for the solid waste department. The cost of that service was 51,550 dollars. In May of 2025, SCS Engineers completed a comprehensive review of the solid waste department's responsibility for collecting commercial and residential trash within the city of Garden City. This included a financial analysis to review the long-term financial sustainability of the solid waste operations with the anticipated growth within Garden City and create a management plan and a rate structure that allow the city to fully recover the cost of providing the trash-collected services. The last rate study was performed eight years ago. The rates have increased 50 cents per year since that time. However, a rate adjustment is required to fund the various services provided to Garden City residents due to inadequate reserve funds, the ever-increasing cost of trash-collected equipment, and a growing community. Staff presented the cost-of-service study recommendations to the governing body on May 30th of 2025 during a pre-meeting workshop, where considerable discussion was held on the cost-of-service recommendations from the consultant and the need of replacing the compressed natural gas fuel trash truck replacement plan. The governing body is asked to present, the governing body asked staff to present three different options at its June 3rd, 2025 city commission meeting on how to raise the required revenues as outlined in the cost-of-service study, with consideration of stair-stepping, the necessary rate increases to meet the required O and M costs and building a 90-day O and M reserve, and fund the necessary capital expenditures for equipment replacement. We've put together three different options as directed, and if it's okay with you, I'm not going to read all of the different numbers. I'll just tell you that option number one would be to follow the cost-of-service study as outlined by the consultant, and that's to do all of the rate increases at one time January 1 of 2026. Alternative two is a staggered approach. This is where we recommended that on July 1st of 2025, a portion of the increase would be raised in July of '25, remainder would be raised in July, January 1 of 2026. So, it's a two-step process of raising those rates. And then the third-year approach, three-year approach, would be the same thing, effective July 1, 2025. There'd be a portion of those increases applied, effective January 1 of 2026, another portion of those increases would be applied, and then again, January 1st of 2027, that remaining section would be applied to increasing those rates as outlined in the cost-of-service study.
The governing body may not authorize the mayor to sign this purchase agreement. Staff recommends that the governing body authorize the mayor to sign their real estate purchase agreement between the city and Snyder Radio Service, Inc., Incorporated for the purchase of eight point three three acres of real property for one hundred thousand dollars. And the fiscal note is approved today, the one hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of this property will come from the electric department's twenty five budget. This will be paid from land purchase GL code in the electric additions budget. This GL has a current balance of fifty thousand dollars available in the original twenty twenty five budget. And if approved, an adjustment would be made to this in twenty five revised budget in the amount of the expenditure of one hundred thousand dollars. And I'm more happy to answer any questions you may have. Is there maps of that area in your packet and on the screen? Red hashed areas, that area that we would like to purchase.
Any questions from the commission on this item? Entertain a motion then on this item.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the real estate purchase agreement between the city and Snyder Radio Service, Inc., for the purchase of eight point three three acres approximately of real property for a hundred thousand dollars.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Be noted that Commissioner Landgraf is stepping down on twelve C.
Item twelve C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a real estate purchase agreement with American Warrior Construction, Inc., for approximately four point five seven acres of property located within the north Taylor addition for sixty eight thousand five hundred fifty dollars.
Yes, Mayor Wishers, this real estate purchase is approved today by their governing body. This property would be utilized by the Garden City Electric Department for a future site of a new electrical substation that would replace the very old but almost at capacity electrical substation number five, which is currently located at eleventh and West Cannibal Street. Substation five would be converted to a switchyard only type of origin, and this would allow for more optimal placing of our substation on this property if you approve the purchase today. The seller's obligations to the attached agreement are subject to and contingent upon approval of this agreement by the U.S. Bankruptcy Court District of Kansas pursuant to case number twenty four dash one 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 six eight, chapter eleven. If approved by the bankruptcy court, the name can be approved by the judge and due to there being no objections, the city would then be obligated to keep the purchase, to complete the purchase for sixty eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars as outlined in the agreement. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve this real estate purchase agreement for sixty eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, or number two, the governing body may not make choose not approve this purchase agreement. Staff recommends the governing body approve the real estate purchase agreement for sixty eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And approved today, the six hundred, the sixty eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars will come from the electric department's twenty twenty five budgets. It's in the same line item, we just authorized the purchase of that other property, and the revised, the twenty twenty five budget will be provided for like this additional purchase with it as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions for Mike on this item?
So nothing on the purchase, other than just to ask her as far as the substation, is that something that we're looking at in subsequent years doing, or is that something that's already been planned that we're going to put on this property?
Yes, we've had that planned for some time.
Okay.
Quite a while back, we got this worked out, and things slowed down, so now we're ready to move forward.
Bill do it, okay. Yeah, I recommend that, I, motion that we approve the real estate purchase agreement for sixty eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll wait for Commissioner Landgraf to come back to the bench.
Item twelve D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the first amendment to the planned unit development plan for Prairie View Acres located near the southwest corner of the intersection of North Campus Drive and U.S. Highway fifty.
May I ask commissioners, CG Investments LLC requests to amend the planned unit development plan for Prairie View Acres. The original PUD plan was adopted on June fifth, twenty eighteen, which consisted of detached single family homes with a zero watt line along the north side of Prairie View Drive and attached single family homes along the south side of Prairie View Drive. The developer, CG Investments LLC, intends to sell thirty one lots to German Homes, Inc., where the builder intends to build smaller detached single family homes over two years. Due to the narrow watts, the entire development has a PUD. However, the north side of Prairie View Drive has a zero watt line overlay as well, which allows homes to be built on the property line on one side and a ten foot setback on the other. German Homes, Inc., has designed smaller homes that do not meet the zero watt line overlay. If the rezone and the PUD plan amendment are approved, the homes designed by German Homes, Inc., will be allowed to be built. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the first amendment to the planned unit development plan for Prairie View Acres, or the governing body may not approve the first amendment to the planned unit development plan for Prairie View Acres. Staff recommends the governing body approve the first amendment to the planned unit development plan for Prairie View Acres, and there is no fiscal impact by approving the first amendment to the PUD plan for Prairie View Acres.
Any questions for Alicia? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the first amendment to the planned unit development plan for Prairie View Acres.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve one of the options of the solid waste utility rate adjustments that were identified in the cost of service study. Mike.
Yes, Mayor Wishers, on August fourth of twenty twenty four, the governing body approved a professional services agreement with SCS Engineers of Wichita, excuse me, to perform a cost of service study for the solid waste department. The cost of that service was fifty one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. In May of twenty twenty five, SCS Engineers completed a comprehensive review of the solid waste department's responsibility for collecting commercial and residential trash within the city of Garden City. This included a financial analysis to review the long term financial sustainability of the solid waste operations with the anticipated growth within Garden City and create a management plan and a rate structure that will allow the city to fully recover the cost of providing the trash collected services. The last rate study was performed eight years ago. The rates have increased fifty cents per year since that time. However, a rate adjustment is required to fund the various services provided to Garden City residents due to inadequate reserve funds, the ever increasing cost of trash collected equipment, and a growing community. Staff presented the cost of service study recommendations to the governing body on May thirtieth of twenty twenty five during a pre-meeting workshop where considerable discussion was held on the cost of service recommendations from the consultant and the need of replacing the compressed natural gas fuel trash truck replacement plan. The governing body is asked to present, the governing body asked staff to present three different options at this June third, twenty twenty five city commission meeting on how to raise the required revenues as outlined in the cost of service study with consideration of stair stepping, the necessary rate increases to meet the required O and M costs and building a ready day O and M reserve and fund the necessary capital expenditures for equipment replacement. We've put together three different options as directed, and if it's okay with you, I'm not going to read all of the different numbers. I'll just tell you that option number one would be to follow the cost of service study as, as outlined by the consultant, and that's do all of the rate increases at one time January one of twenty twenty six. Alternative two is a staggered approach. This is where we recommended that on July first of twenty twenty five, a portion of the increase would be raised in July of twenty five, remainder would be raised in July, January one of twenty twenty six. So it's a two step process of raising those rates. And then the third year approach, three year approach would be the same thing, effective July one, twenty twenty five, there'd be a portion of those increases applied, effective January one of twenty twenty six, another portion of those increases would be applied, and then again, January first of twenty twenty seven, that remaining section would be applied to increasing those rates as outlined in the cost of service study. The implementation of any of the options presented should sufficiently fund the solid waste operations over the next three years. Incorporated in this assumption is the authorization of utilizing general obligation bonds of approximately two million dollars with the five year debt service for the replacement of the five seven D fuel trash truck collection trucks and the replacement of the baler used at the recycling center. The debt service for such a bond is anticipated to be approximately four hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year and would be supported by the increased revenues to capture the this proposed rate adjustments. If this equipment was not purchased utilizing GO bonds and is purchased outright using cash balance from the solid waste fund, there would not be sufficient funding to replace the equipment as scheduled with the staggered implementation of this rate adjustments. So alternatives, one is to direct staff to create the necessary ordinances implementing the rate adjustments outlined in number one, as described in the body of this memo, and bring back an ordinance for consideration at a subsequent meeting. Option two is the same thing, but it's for option two, bring back the recommended ordinance for your consideration. Option three is the same thing, it's over a three year period and bring back an alternate ordinance for your consideration. For number four, obviously, the governing body may direct us to any appropriate direction that you would like us to take on that. Our recommendation is that the governing body directs staff to create the necessary ordinances implementing the rate adjustments outlined in number three, the stair stepped approach, as described in the body of this memo, and bring back an ordinance for consideration at a subsequent meeting. Depending upon which, depending upon any rate adjustment action taken by the governing body today, will result in, will result in different financial impacts to the solid waste budget. Should the governing body direct staff to create an ordinance adjusting the rates, the financial impact of those adjustments would be presented to the governing body along with that proposed ordinance. And with all of that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. There's a lot of information in there, a lot of letters, but we're happy to answer that. And one of the handouts in your, is the, is the chart of the impact that you'd like. So I'm happy to cover that if you'd like.
Any questions for Mike?
Well, I do want to say I really appreciate the handouts and analysis. The table really helped you understand where we're headed on that. No, one question I had was concerning the GO bond. Now, would this, if, again, if that's included in this recommendation, would that be a GO bond issued separately, or are you, we're going to decide if we're going to issue additional GO bonds, or does it have to be issued as a standalone GO bond?
We would work with Matt and Finance Director S to whether or not these GO bonds would be included with others or not, I don't know.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be?
Bonds would be paid for by the solid waste fund, they wouldn't be paid for out of it, without the general fund or any other fund, so the rating adjustments that will occur will cover the cost of those.
And then how the, how those are structured, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item then.
I see that staff's recommendation is the stair step. I would like more of just that first option of raising just one time and then instead of having to kind of double gauge or get double hit with, with this inflow of, that would be hard for staff to manage.
Any other comments from the commission?
Well, the only comment I would have for the stair step approach was it would be give people a chance to absorb and understand what the new costs are going to be. And so I think in our, in, in previous rate increases, we've actually created a, a rolling plan where, again, we visit these more often. And I, I appreciate your indicating that, you know, this would be a one time hit and then we would go on from there. And I can see the benefit of that, but again, I think this idea of making sure, so I mean, I would be fine with either that or option three, so.
I was kind of doing, I was looking at the numbers too, and I think doing a one time thing would be the, I mean, the way to look at it, I suppose. I'd be more in favor of the option one on my thinking, so.
I'm, both the Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Wen, I'm in favor of just going ahead and doing it the one time. Go ahead and do it all at once, be able to get it done.
Would that bring up any questions from you, Mike, as far as that recommendation? Okay.
I mean, that was what, that's what they were recommending in the first place during our pre-meeting, kind of directing us, and then, you know, throughout the pre-meeting, we kind of had the discussion of previous commissions have kind of stair stepped to kind of ease the, ease that, that transition to that higher rate, but.
A little bit of the difference embedded into this plan, it kind of goes back to that global direction the commission gave as far as putting our fees together and kind of universally annually considering adjustments that help keep pace with, and that way, you know, when these cost of service studies come down, it isn't like, you know, you aren't taking this roller coaster ride in your cash balance from, you know, you build it up so that you can, you know, glide down, that you're kind of operating consistently at that, that same level. So if we go with option one, it is, the big hit is all at once, but keeping in mind that then annually after that, you're still going to be considering additional, additional steps, but you're going to be universally considering them across the whole schedule of fees, you know, building permits, dog tags, whatever, everything's going to be in there that the commission might consider.
Yeah, to me, I think that the idea of knowing that, you know, I mean, we're going to be looking at this on a more regular basis and making sure we're going to keep those. To me, this idea of making sure they understand that there is an ongoing, rather than, again, this big hit, it reminds me of when insurance companies, I mean, you have a big loss here in town, all of a sudden, all of your insurance, all of your insurance policies go up because you, is expected. But I think here, I think the cost of study increase, I mean, I, I real, the cost of study was very valuable in showing us that, hey, we really have, we've got to get on this now in order to make sure that we can, in the future, really make sure that we can pay our overall costs. So I still would rather do the stair step rather than the one, but it's.
Somebody want to entertain a motion?
Sure. I'll move to make the motion that we direct staff to create the necessary ordinances implementing the rate adjustment outlined in number one, as described in the body of this memorandum, and bring back the ordinance for consideration at a subsequent meeting. So alternative number one.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That item passed.
Thank you, I would like to make a comment, Mayor, I think my business department did help considerably with this chart that you have, so, just so you know.
It's well done.
I didn't have a lot to add myself.
Thank you very much.
It was really well done, Mike, you should have said, yeah, so.
Mayor, may I get a clarification on that vote? Nay was Anru and Cesna?
Right.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Item twelve F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Grace Bible Church subdivision final plat and authorize the mayor to execute the quit claim deed with Grace Bible Church of Garden City.
May I ask commissioners, the city of Garden City is requesting approval of the final plat of Grace Bible Church subdivision. The site is located at approximately twenty five ninety five North Jenny Barker Road. The property is currently zoned LR low density residential and contains plus or minus four point zero five acres. The city is requesting to plat this property to combine existing lots, dedicate right of way, and establish utility easements. The plat was presented for a second supplemental review on February twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, with the minimum requirements of the zoning and subdivision requirements. The planning commission recommended approval of the plat at their December twenty first, twenty twenty three meeting. This plat is part of the vacation process considered as a separate agenda item and public hearing for the former sections of Mary Street and North Jenny Barker Road. In two thousand and eleven, when the East K one fifty six Jenny Barker Road, East and Mary Street intersection was realigned to its current arrangement, the city of Garden City obtained various tracts of land, including, including remnants outside of the necessary Mary Street right of way. At the June seventh, twenty twenty two meeting, the governing body approved the transfer of ownership of the excess property located at twenty four eighty five North Jenny Barker Road from the city to Grace Bible Church in exchange for the necessary easements and right of way on property owned by the church. The plating of Grace Bible Church causes the dedication of easements and right of way from Grace Bible Church to the city. The proposed deed causes the ownership of these, of those portions of lot one of the Grace Bible Church subdivision, which are currently owned by the city, to be transferred to Grace Bible Church as shown and labeled on such plat. Thus completing the coordinated effort and fulfillment of the June seventh, twenty twenty two directive, the plat indeed must be considered following a public hearing and consideration of the ordinance vacating the road easements as described. The alternatives today are the governing body may approve the plat and authorize the mayor to execute the quit claim deed with Grace Bible Church of Garden City, or the governing body may not approve the plat or authorize the mayor to execute the quit claim deed with Grace Bible Church of Garden City and provide staff with alternative direction. Staff recommends the governing body approve the plat and authorize the mayor to execute the quit claim deed with Grace Bible Church of Garden City, and there is no fiscal impact.
Any questions for Alicia? None being, entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the plat and authorize the mayor to execute the quit claim deed with Grace Bible Church of Garden City.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve three appointments to the zoo advisory board.
So the zoo advisory board is a seven member team, and we have three who are currently ending their terms with us the end of this month. Those three all expressed interest in re-upping, and they are all eligible. The zoo advisory board considered those options and unanimously supported the return of the three. All seven are listed on your packet information. The alternatives are the governing body may appoint Leanne Tong, Jesse Dimmell, and Stephanie Howe each to a new term, or you can appoint fewer than three of the candidates and give staff further direction. The zoo advisory board and staff recommend alternative one, appointing Leanne Tong, Jesse Dimmell, and Stephanie Howe each to a new term. There is no fiscal impact by this action.
Any questions for Kristy?
I know that you have really good attendance at your meetings. Are these three, are these three members really good attenders as far as doing that? That's all I had.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move we appoint Leanne Tong, Jesse Dimmell, and Saban Hogg to each to a new term.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Ortiz made the second, any other discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I think we pulled, item twelve H was pulled, from what I understand, so we'll go on to twelve I.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve an employment agreement between the city of Garden City and Matthew Allen.
Mayor, commissioners, before you pay, you have an employment agreement with Matt Allen. We've made a couple of changes. The smallest one is you will see that we have brought it into compliance with what you already acknowledged for city employees, which is a fifty mile radius rather than a hundred mile radius. That was a really easy change, it was something that Matt caught that wasn't, wasn't similar, and he wanted to make sure was corrected. The other two items you will see, as is outlined in my memo, is that previously, Matt, there was a clause in his contract previously that allowed him to take a hundred and twenty hours per year and convert that his hourly rate into cash payment essentially, essentially in addition to his salary. And so what this does is that removes that clause, he's no longer able to do that, but it's converted into his salary. The only other adjustments that are made here are adjusted based on the pay plan that has been adjusted for all our city employees. So you can see in his contract, the new salary, and it's not up here, but is, is two hundred and ten thousand and some change, I don't remember what the exact number was, two hundred and ten four ninety six. And so that is representative, the hundred and twenty is not a change in monetary value, it is removing one item and adding it to another portion, and so it, it doesn't impact the actual amount that you're paying him, and the other move is a move similar to others paid employees on a pay scale, so that's all I have.
Any questions for Jennifer? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the employment agreement between the city of Garden City and Matthew C. Allen.
Commissioner Landgraf made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Anru, any discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Will this be the start of your twentieth year, Matt, or is it your?
Um, no, uh.
One hundred.
Eighteen, eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen. Okay, good.
All right, moving on to twelve J.
Finance Director Coleman will review the general fund and provide information on the anticipated property tax impact of the current state of the draft budget.
Good afternoon.
Eric.
Taking note that the AC wasn't working the last meeting before we started, I'm really glad it was working today. Full house. I'll read the, the item, and then we'll go, start going through the budgets. This portion of the twenty twenty six proposed budget presentation focuses on the general fund. As with the review of funds in previous meetings, the review of the general fund will include both a review of revenues and expenditures. The general fund revenues include the following assumptions on these large revenue line items. Ad valorem property tax number that represents a three percent increase in valuation. The total dollar value assessed in property taxes for the city of Garden City for twenty twenty five was eleven million three hundred forty six thousand two hundred fifty six dollars, based on a final valuation of two hundred ninety four million eight hundred thirty eight thousand one hundred thirty eight dollars. Assuming an increase of three percent, the preliminary estimation of the valuation for this year would be three hundred and three million six hundred eighty three thousand two hundred eighty two dollars. A flat mill levy is projected to provide eleven million six hundred eighty six thousand six hundred forty four dollars in ad valorem property tax revenue for the city. As presented, the airport fund will require one million seven hundred forty nine thousand seventy five dollars in ad valorem property tax. The debt service fund will require two million eight hundred thirty three thousand eight hundred ninety six dollars, not considering additional debt service being added with the twenty twenty five GO bond issuance. This would leave seven million one hundred three thousand six hundred seventy three dollars allocated to general fund for a flat mill, mill rate. The twenty twenty five city sales tax, county sales tax, and consumer use tax receipts, which represent three point seven percent, three percent, and two point five percent increases respectively over the twenty twenty five approved budget amounts. These represent a point three percent, minus point two percent, minus one point six percent increase over the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty four actual figures. Twenty twenty six city sales tax, county sales tax, and consumer use tax, which represents a one point eight percent, one percent, one point two percent increase respectively over the twenty five revised budget amounts. By the time the governing body is positioned to consider an indication of revenue neutral rate intent in early July, publish a notice for a revenue neutral rate hearing and or notice of a budget hearing in early August, or finalize and adopt the twenty six budget in early September, there'll be more clarity on these revenue line items. The general fund expenditures shown in the budget reflect the department budget requests as presented the city manager for preliminary review. While this usually yields a city manager's proposed budget that requires a suggested ad valorem tax amount higher than what the governing body desires, it serves as a good starting point for the budget discussions that ensue over the following two months, with full transparency of department requests, administrative recommendations, and governing body decisions. This year, as in years past, department directors presented fair and reasonable budget requests. The relationship between projected revenues and requested expenditures in this year's budget was more in line with what had been seen historically and did not have as large of a gap as the preliminary budget for twenty twenty five. While administration has reviewed and made some adjustments to some general fund revenue projections to be a bit less conservative than past years, to alleviate some of the disparity between the projected revenues and requested expenses, general fund departments have not been asked to provide recommended cuts to their budget as they did last year. If the target of the twenty twenty six budget is to achieve a flat mill levy, the general fund as presented today has a shortfall of one million four hundred and seventy five thousand four hundred and six dollars. The city expects to receive the estimated valuation from the county by June fifteenth, twenty twenty five. This valuation will replace the assumption of the three percent increase. Dependent upon the estimate, the shortfall for the general fund may increase or decrease. At that time, staff will work to provide scenarios for the governing body to choose from, which will allow for a balanced budget, which may include adjusting projected revenues for the city or eliminating some expenses. All right, we'll get into it. Any questions on any of that information presented before I start going through the budget?
Yes, sir.
All right, first page, as, as in the past- First page, as, as in the past, you have the full sheet for the projected cash flow of each fund, not just the general fund, but this is now all funds presented, along with any updates that have occurred throughout the last few weeks of, for the utilities or any other fund that's been presented. So in this line, you can see that the general fund, the bond and interest fund, and the airport fund zero out to a $0 2026 ending cash balance. That's on the state budget forms, you have the, kind of the mechanism for that, and that's why those funds show a 2026 cash forward amount where we designate a specific dollar value we want to make sure is kind of held over to that future year. The first division that we'll go through today is our revenue for the general fund admin. Here I'll point out for the ad valorem tax, the line 3040, you'll see in that 2026 column 8,7395. That's the number that's budgeted to, to make the budget work as it's presented right now. That would be the, the amount of ad valorem tax for the general fund needing to be levied. The difference between that and the portion indicated as what would be available to the general fund on a flat mill levy is that discrepancy or that shortfall that I mentioned. You'll see that in the city sales tax, county sales tax, and consumer use tax, we have the revenues upticking in 2025 projected from what was originally budgeted as well as a 26 figure. Those are the lines that we reviewed and historically we've been very conservative in our first estimation of those, come back along the path and somewhat uptick them. This year, we just kind of upticked them a little bit preemptively, anticipating that would be a lever we would end up pulling for the general fund. And so those are a little less conservative than what we would have probably presented in, in past years.
Jared, is that 0.15 we talked about earlier in the pre-meeting, is that included in the city sales tax figure?
In this figure, it's not included. The 0.15 sales tax is carved out of this, the revenues and put in the separate 0.15 fund. So this revenue line here shows the dollars that come to the general fund that are available for the general fund.
Okay.
And so when you see the, actually our sales tax reports, when there's a little bit of discrepancy between city sales tax totals versus the city sales tax number we present on that monthly report, it's because the monthly report is showing the general fund piece of that 1% city sales tax. If you go to the next page, you'll see that we're upticking the municipal court fines line a little bit. They're on pace this year, they're, to hit about 750,000, and so we've upticked that a little bit. The rest of our budget lines stay relatively the same on that page. You'll see interest income for 2025, we've upticked a little bit. We do see interest rates still fairly high compared to what they were two years ago, three years ago. And so last year, our actuals was about 1.7 million in interest income between all the city's bank accounts and kind of cash held. And so we've projected that to be 1.4 this year, coming down a little in anticipation of some droppages of, of interest rates. And then for 26, again, a conservative estimation of anticipating rates potentially going down if they stay flat. We would probably revise that number next year, but we don't want to anticipate revenues that then won't, won't come in, in the future. I'll also point out that the transfer, at the bottom of the page, the transfer admin overhead and the transfer utility franchise line 4012 and 4013, these are the amounts that are allocated for the coverage of the administrative portion of the utilities as well as their franchise fee. And so that comes from the water, the electric, and the solid waste funds. And so as their revenues go up, that franchise fee portion is increased as well. And then for the administrative overhead, every five years, we kind of calibrate that transfer to, to cover a particular amount of the general fund admin expenses that would otherwise be constituted for an administrative division for a utility and align those. And so this is one year where we've aligned those up a little bit to, to account for the costs that we're experiencing in the general fund.
Jared, can I ask you a question on that? The, the commission just approved, at least moving forward with considering an ordinance on a solid waste rate change that would be effective January 1st of 2026. I think there's other utility incremental changes as well. Do these numbers reflect baking those increases in already?
This reflects an increase in 26, an anticipated increase in 26, but with us not knowing yet what the decision would be, it was a lower figure. So I can go back, I'll re-figure now that we know what the indication is there. There will likely be an increase in the 26 revenue projection line for the solid waste department over what we initially held in there. We do budget for this piece of the administrative overhead or the franchise fee piece, but then we don't actually start taking the actuals in that year until we know what the actuals at the end of a year was. So for 2025, based off of the end of the year actual revenue, we will transfer in, in 26, the 5% fee of what the actuals were. That way it's based off of a real number and not a hypothesis. And so the 26 increase of revenue won't take effect of this line until the end, like 2027 revenues, we'd see that 26 jump start to, to impact this line. On the last page of the general fund, general administration revenues, you'll see the transfer other line of 200,000 in 2025. That's the portion of the 0.15 sales tax that was decided by the commission to, to put into the general fund last year, and then the other portion went towards the CIP plan. This year, there's no amount indicated this time as a transfer from the 0.15 to the general fund, and the full 400,000 allotment there is anticipated to go to the CIP at this time. And then I'll indicate the transfer for the 0.30 sales tax. This is the amount that comes from the sales tax revenues to subsidize the operational costs of the fire department. As we get down the road and kind of finalize the costs for the station and finish up the project costs, the ongoing revenue will really cover the debt service for the bonds that were issued for the project as well as the operational cost. And it's anticipated this time that those costs for the, the operation and the debt service, along with the $4 million internal loan we have, the revenues probably won't be out, quit to cover the entirety of that. And so rather than increase this based off of the proportionate cost of the fire department budget, we're keeping it steady at the 1.6 because otherwise we would draw that fund down more accelerated and we'd experience that pain of that a little quicker. And so I'll discuss that a little further, but in the past, you've had the presentation in the fire department budget where they break out the additional staff being added and the equipment that goes with them. Moving forward, our determination of the cost of the third fire station operation will be a third of the fire department budget minus some administrative pieces, because that will reflect really a third of their force is out of that station, a third of the equipment costs, a third of the supplies and operations costs will end up being allocated to that station. And so we'll move away from kind of that detailed breakout of just the new staffing and, and aggregate the, a third of the total fire budget. And that number, I believe for 2026 is around $2 million is our estimation for what the operational cost for the station will be. Next, we have the commission budget. This uptick you'll see for maintenance contracts is about the only change here. We have the new software for the Granicus software, the agenda software. That annual cost is coming out of the commission agenda, budget here. And so that maintenance contact, contract increase is about the only difference. And then there's some of the new equipment in the new equipment office line, just as we replace iPads and equipment for commissioners. For the city manager's office, you'll see, and kind of a constant theme throughout, if you remember from our presentation with utilities, the insurance for property and insurance for vehicle, we increased the 25 revised to accommodate the costs that we experienced, and we're budgeting a 25% increase in 2026. And so those figures in every budget that has an insurance line, you'll see those, those amounts are going up. In the repair building, some of the plan for that cost, the $10,000 in '25 this year is for the, some of the carpet and lights projects we've been doing. Some of that'll come out of our retained funds for this building as well, but we're still doing a little bit of upkeep projects for this, this building. And primarily the rest of their, their budget stays fairly even keel with what has been presented in previous years. Next is our service and finance department. Here we have, I'll point out the decrease in the audit expense line, which is 5216. With the transition to the K-MAG budget, we've seen a decrease in that budget or that cost. The maintenance contract line, you'll see tagged amount for 70,000 in 2026. We'll begin to whittle off the amount that we have had set aside for the Tyler implementation for this, the service of finance, the financials, the HR modules. We had, set aside some money in the CIP plan for the rollout of that, and it's been paying the annual cost, but that will start to roll off and that cost will then be split across multiple departments. So some of that will come out of the, the general fund here in the service and finance line. And it may be that in '26, that amount can be whittled down somewhat, but we're in, holding that as a, in case, in case we need it. Other than that, fairly, fairly status quo as well in the service and finance budget. Next, we have legal services. This budget has stayed primarily level for the past few years. We have seen increased costs on our legal line, and so after these two years, we'll anticipate probably seeing an increase on the legal services budget in, in future budgets, but for now staying about that 316,000 per year. Next, we have municipal court. Here you'll see that their banking credit card charges has decreased with their new software. They've reallocated the way that they proportion out the costs for their credit card fees. And so that cost for the department has gone down. Their contract services is for the judge contract, and that has an annual escalator, so you'll see that amount going up in '25 and '26. And then their maintenance contract, similar to the service and finance and HR department, their Tyler software has been paid for with the financing that we went through Clayton Holdings, but that'll drop off in 2025. And so in 2026, they increase to that 65,000 as a placeholder for that increased cost for the software that they're utilizing. And then their repair bud, buildings line is up a little bit in this year. They've had some, some kind of fixes from when their remodel occurred that they've had to address. And then their legal court appointed line is, is going down a little bit. And I'll kick it to Cynthia and let her speak to a little bit about some of those lines and kind of the other adjustments that are being made in their budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. As Jared stated, for the maintenance fees, that was one of the bigger changes because of our new software. With training and education, we had also had cut that off for 2025 because of a tighter budget year, but because we were saving for court appointed attorney fees, we decided to bring that back to what our normal line item budget is to, you know, make sure that we're keeping up with our relationships with state agencies and those memberships. And like I said, the court appointed attorney fees are going down, and this year we're estimating it's going to be the same based off of the numbers that we're having. So those are the major highlights for our department.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our human resources department. You'll see an uptick in their salary line. There was some shuffling, as you remember, the payroll has been shifted up to the HR department, and so they took on an extra staff, a shift from service of finance up to HR. And then there was some part-time positions filled in service of finance in lieu of the accounts payable side of what our payroll person has done for us. And so a little bit of shifting in staff salary costs there. We have a near market amount for the consultant fee. This is for kind of the ongoing questions of this kind of one-offs that come up with the consultant for the typically pay. We are looking at potentially doing a PACE study or kind of leapfrogging on a PACE study that's going on in our area this year. And so we are holding about $325,000 in the capital improvement division of the general fund for a placeholder of the cost of that study as well as implementation of any kind of calibration that would be necessary if the commission decides to do so. Their maintenance contracts account for a few other projects or a few different kind of adjustments and additions to what they've been utilizing for software in the past. And I'll have Ellie speak on that a little bit as well. And I think everything else in their lines pretty much stays, stays pretty similar.
Has it been that long since we've done a compensation study?
We did, our, our major one was 2017. We did an uptick in 2021. It's been a few years.
Yeah, this is our, this is probably our, this is our second sort of mid-plan maintenance. And I think taking advantage of, again, another one being done in the area is an, is an opportunity to get kind of good value, to get it freshened up without having to go out and do the, the whole big thing, the whole big rollout.
Okay, I just, I was, I know we did one, but I didn't know.
We, we did a calibration, and so this will be similar to what was done last time. Rather than the whole overhaul, it'll be kind of a tune-up to our plan. You know, when we rolled this out, I think the anticipation was our plan would stay fairly steady for the future, and then we hit COVID and we've hit tariffs. I mean, there's just so much volatility right now that I think we are accelerating the, the occurrence of how often we're analyzing our scale just because the market has been so volatile. And so this is another tune-up type. It, it won't quite be a total overhaul, but a tune-up because they'll already be in the area and we can kind of take advantage of a diminished cost for our piece there.
So that will be, that will take place in Jared here, this, in next year's budget? Or, so you're holding, is that the 325,000 you said you're holding?
Yeah, if you would approve it, it would happen in this year's, this year's budget. The cost of the plan, Ellie's got a ballpark cost of the plan she can share with you. The bulk of that money is kind of a holding, kind of initial buydown of what might come out of, in the way of recommendations that would put us in a position to implement in January of 2026 rather than wait till, wait till you're considering the 2027 budget, because by then it's kind of old news and you're probably behind whatever you're implementing.
And, and I'll remind you, I feel bad Ellie's standing here stretching her legs.
Sorry, I kind of got us off the track now.
The, the last few years, the last two years since we did the, the adjustment to the pay plan a few years ago, the recommendation was to use a 3% salary uptick for that kind of January 1 scale adjustment because the market was moving so quickly. We've seen a decrease in the market increases. We kind of look at the CPI, we look at a few different factors of determining what it'd be earlier on in the year when we started the budget process, it was closer to 2%. Through the last couple of months, it's ticking up closer to 3%. So our budget assumption for this year was a 2% January 1, 2026 increase. And so it could be that this, the, the pay plan scale says, hey, you should at least stick with the 3% you've been doing. That may be a metric that then pulls, allows that, $325,000 allows the trigger of, okay, well, let's at least just stick with the scale of what we were doing previously. Maybe you don't have to adjust more than that. We won't know that until we see the results, but at least we have some funds held, similar to what we did when we did this last time, that it gives you a mechanism to pull a lever and say, yeah, we want to pull this off now or in six months or a year without having to then go find the full solution to that, that pain.
No, thank you.
Yeah, so like Jared said, McGrath Human Resources is going to be back in the area next month. And so since they were the ones that did it back in '21 for us, and then in '23, we did decide to get a quote from them, which was just a little under 50,000. And then he touched on the maintenance contracts as well for the HR budget. And last year, we actually cut out the decision wise piece, which is an employee viewpoint survey that we did in 2023, and that was about 20,000. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, good.
All right, next we have the information technology division. Here you'll see pretty steady and a lot of their salary benefits. The internet connection, kind of uptick, just normal pace. The maintenance contracts for them, we, as we continue to see a rollout of more software, more kind of a technological element of our industry or our organization, we continue to see maintenance contracts for the, the kind of safe upkeep of, of such. You'll also see subscriptions going up. A lot of that has to do with the maintenance and the oversight of firewalls, the oversight of safekeeping cybersecurity. I'll have, Clay will come in and be able to speak a little bit at some of the new kind of modules or new software that they're, they're rolling out. But the, we continue to see increased costs. It's great to have the efficiencies gained, but everything comes with a price to manage it as well. Then the other piece is their new equipment office line, which is being, dropping down a little bit as well from what it was last year. But that covers the, like, general fund department computers, and they've, have a rotation, a built-in schedule and rotation where they, they bite off those, those computers for the general fund. Clay?
Yeah, thank you. Like Jared said, some of our subscriptions are two different security softwares. One's brand new to the city, one is a replacement for an old one. We found a new one, so that, going with that. The new equipment office is, some of that is, we're going to move access control for all the city doors. But in our initial bid, we didn't, we couldn't do all the doors, so next year we're going to finish all the doors we couldn't do this year. And then the new computer replacement, like I said, it's a fiber plan. We did have to increase a little bit, the tariffs and everything, my mom, because price coming up, so we're trying to stay ahead of that. And then the Office 265 licensing goes up a little bit next year due to the zoo changing how some of the licensing is done for their animal keepers, because we're going to do stuff differently in a license. So that's a big tip in on this for us.
So as far as the, the cybersecurity, is that, is that built into the budget as far as just the, or is that one of the programs you're talking about that you're upgrading or?
Yeah, so this year we upgraded our antivirus. We had an antivirus, we found one that does antivirus plus, it has a 24% monitor, so that even when we're sleeping, somebody's watching it, and they can step in and take action, and then they let us know. And then the other one is a program that tracks kind of what programs are running on the machines, and you can allow the programs that you're using, and then if something tries to run, it isn't allowed, it locks up, lets us know.
So does the Tyler technology, is it easier to protect as far as against, you know, are the firewalls stronger or?
The Tyler, it's all managed by them, so for us, it's really easy because it's their problem. So we just make sure that we have a connection to them, and we're good.
I think if you look back at your presentation from the retreat as well, the access points this year, as we add more access points of any internet connection, it's one more door that could be accessed by malicious intent. And so a lot And so a lot of that activity that we've added is, is creating those barriers to make sure that we're protected as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the admin for city prosecution. This is our contract piece with Dering, Grisella, and Cunningham. And this amount, our contract with them was renewed last year, and so those, that price will stay the same through 2027. So that's the same amount for each year. Bless you. Next, we have our communications division. Here they have maintenance costs, maintenance contract costs. They facilitate and oversee some of our different social media platforms. We have the City Bot, the Civic Plus, the website. So kind of those outward-facing modules that the commission, the communications department maintains is what their maintenance contracts cover. They also have an uptick this year for the amount for a potential remodel of an office space. And other, and I'll let Yemi speak to that a little bit, but the rest of their budget is fairly status quo to what it has been in the past.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Like Jared said, I think two notable projects that are proposed for the 2026 year are an A D A tool for our website, and this is to ensure that we're compliant with the federal requirements that are coming up on website accessibility for local governments here in the 2027 year. And then there is a budget request to convert one of the basement storage rooms into a dedicated communication space.
Any questions? And that line you'll see is the supplies office. They don't really have an equipment line that's for kind of repair like we do in others. And so that's kind of a placeholder for that project, is that $60,000.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the neighborhood development services division. Here you'll see kind of one of the main costs of their department is the engineering fees. This is for the retainer piece with our engineering department that we have annually. This covers a lot of the small kind of tiki-tack engineering costs. Well, small, it's a, it's a significant figure, but the smaller kind of one-off type things rather than a significant project. Generally speaking, when Wilson Engineering is, is working on a project like the cemetery expansion, those costs for that engineering specifically is under that project cost and that project budget. And so this is kind of the run-of-the-mill, everyday thing. We also have a new line that Trent will be able to speak to a little bit on the repair dilapidated buildings line, which is 5493. This is a new placeholder budget line for anticipated costs that we could experience down the road. And then I'll point out as well that in the 26 budget, you'll see $40,000 for their new equipment vehicle. This is to replace one of the pickups that they currently have that's about 10 years old. The rest of their budget is fairly, fairly status quo. And Alicia is covering for Trent.
Mayor Commissioners, the line item we added for the dilapidated structures is, so if we do have a dilapidated structure, then city limits that we're able to go either tear it down, form it up, or whatever we need to do to make the structure safe.
Thank you.
And we would seek reimbursement of the cost, just like we do with any other violation. The fund we typically use for tho- that type of kind of weed repair doesn't have a lot of money in it, so if there was a significant cost, it wouldn't have enough to absorb that type of, of cost. We put in the general fund, but then we would go seek reimbursement for those costs. Any questions with any administrative division before we move into the police department? All right, the first section for the police is their revenues. Here you'll see some of the revenues are those generated by the indoor shooting range. The repayment police, I'll highlight, and if you've seen the 25 projection, the repayment police is $580,000 and then jumps to $300,000 in 2026. This is the contract piece from particularly the school district and then a couple others for police services, the, the SROs. The timing in 2024, the payments, the city had a hiccup on our billing, and so they weren't paid in '24, so they're getting paid in '25. You'll see an increase for a year, and then back down to the $300,000 is kind of the routine contract piece for 2026. And so a little out of the ordinary, but the dollars is just a timing, timing issue there. Other than that, things stay fairly, fairly steady across those. And the police administrative division, you'll see the salaries and benefits here for the administrative staff. The maintenance contract line is upticking. There's a piece here for the Tyler software as well for the police department that's been able to be paid down by that financing from Clayton Holdings. And so just like municipal court, service of finance, the, the annual service fees for those are going to start hitting the regular budget. So that's where the uptick from '25 to '26 comes from for their maintenance contracts line. Apart from that, they'll have repair vehicles, building repair. They have a lot of vehicles, a lot of space. Their dollars are larger than other departments just because they have more, more people and more area. We still have the utilities, LEC amount in here, as well as some different new equipment lines. The new equipment for the vehicle, Chief Purt will speak to this a little bit. We've, we have a little bit of a sample of our enterprise fleet management contract that's a, the police department took part of as well for some of the replacement of their command vehicles. And then in 2026, the $282,000 is to replace patrol vehicles, kind of a batch of patrol cars, getting back to our normal routine schedule there. And then the new equipment other incorporates the payment to Commerce Bank or Clayton Holdings for the financial software, Tyler Police Department and CAD software. And then they also have the, all the equipment that goes on the vehicles that they get each year, and then some of their other kind of smaller equipment as well. For police investigations, police patrol, and police support services, those are the next three divisions, as well as animal control. The city is looking at consolidating those. We've had struggle in the past between our HR department and police department to track kind of where the bodies all are and what we associate with being kind of our CRD division or what's investigations and whether that has patrol officers in it or just investigators. And so similar to what we did in the fire department two years ago, where we consolidated the ARF station fire department, the volunteer fire department division, and just consolidated to make it all fire ops, doing something similar for police and rolling those into a police operations budget, so it would incorporate patrol, investigations, support services, and animal control. We would still keep the costs for the indoor range segregated so that we can kind of track that as a business enterprise piece. But the, the rest, as we finalize the budget this year, we'll consolidate them on the state report, and then in future budget years, you'll see those put together. As we go through these, you'll identify that the primary function of each of these divisions is the salary and benefit portions, and then some small amounts for uniform expense, gas, oil, and diesel, or a few miscellaneous things. So really consolidating the, the staffing costs would, into one operations budget would simplify things. If at any point the commission ever does want to see or request a breakdown of, help us understand what are the costs for investigations, what are we accomplishing in patrol, what does that cost? We could still break that all out and provide it, but from a, an administrative standpoint, it will simplify things quite a bit for the city. So under investigations, it's primarily the cost of the staff. You do see there's some investigation or spend, expense budget at $30,000. They do have their uniforms for those staff that come out of here. And then we have the transfer for the HIDA grant. The city has a, an internal piece, they have to fund a portion of the HIDA grant, and then the rest comes from the federal piece. And so we transfer this to that HIDA fund every year out of the investigations division. Next, police patrol, primarily the salary and benefits as well. You do have some cost here for repairing equipment, and then uniform and gas, oil, and diesel as well. Support services, very similar, staffing and benefits, and then you have the small line for repair equipment and a little bit for, for uniform expense. And then for animal control, we do have a contracted piece here where we pay for the annual contract for the Humane Society, so that amount comes out. Again, a timing issue. You'll see that there was an extra amount paid in 2024, right at the end of the year, instead of rolling into January 2025. That was an error on my part, and so that kind of timing just in the books is off. The dollars really occur one day apart from when they would have been otherwise, but that's why you see a drop in the 2025 figure and then back up to that $320,000 for 2026. And then apart from that, some small, small operational costs to carry out the control officers.
So does our control officers only operate in the city or do they operate in the county also?
That would be a great question for Chief, but I believe it's primarily city.
Only city, so.
And Finney County has their own animal control officers.
Do they? Okay, I didn't know that.
We usually chase them to the county line.
And they're on the other side chasing them back.
That's great.
And then the last piece of the police department is the indoor range. Here we have, the salary cost is this, the kind of temporary seasonal type positions, the range, safety officers that work out there that administer the, the safety of the range. And then we have the kind of repair buildings and repair equipment line to keep the upkeep of that building going and just make sure that it can stay nice. And then there are supplies out there, the, they have some special filters and some other things that they have to make sure they maintain for the safety and security of the shooting range with the light in the air and such and such. And those can be pretty pricey. We bought some to start off, but now we're going to probably buy those every year and make sure we stay on top of it.
Jared, on that one, on the indoor range, do we not, do we not have any trainings for other communities? And if, if we do, does that go into a revenue kind of area?
Chief.
Should, should we have a revenue police store, indoor range? Just asking.
There was one, but.
Yes, I was.
So I'll just launch into it, answer your question first, Mr. Sherman. Typically, if other communities, it's their law enforcement that are coming over to do the training, it's typically a half-day, just so they can do their qualification. If we do a joint training, it's something that we all get together and do, so it's something that we either sponsoring for three scenes in the class to help bring it out, or they pay just the registration fee to the company that we're bringing out to do the training. So there's not really any revenue that's, that's paid, it's just we have a space. Or we sponsor KLA TC, which is really cheap training for Southwest and this law enforcement.
I would say the, the primary focus has been kind of coordination with other agencies. There is an element of it's a good space and it does have a range if, as we kind of still embark on the newness of this enterprise. If we were looking at renting out the building to a different party, something that wasn't kind of affiliated with law enforcement, that definitely is a, a revenue piece we could, we could build out and capture there as an option for the future.
Although they do, I mean, they do have the public come in for, for shooting, and that's.
I think that's captured in.
In the revenue. And there is, they, they either pay a membership piece or they can come out by the hour. And so that, plus the supplies that are sold out there, those are captured as revenue. But I don't think we have a, a format right now for renting the whole facility and what that cost would be similar. Like, we have, the FinUp Center can be utilized and they pay a cost. We could look at something like that for the future for an outside source that's not kind of first responder related.
So where is it, Bliss, so Jared, where they, where are we going to pay for the, I can't remember if it's a lease or a rent to, for the new temporary police department until we get back in the LEC? Where does that come out of?
So we have been setting aside dollars from the budget for kind of equip, the, the furniture, the building that we are kind of building upon in the capital improvement reserve. We would use that first, but we haven't budgeted an amount here for the, the cost of rolling out.
You haven't, or the, okay.
Have not, nope.
So until we move in there, you won't know the actual costs or?
Are you meaning kind of operational costs or the cost of the renovation?
Well, the, I mean, I know there's a cost of the renovation, but as far as the cost for the lease, you know, over the next several years, where is that going to come out of?
We're currently paying Finney County to be in their space, so we would shift that cost.
And is that list, where is that listed at?
If you look at the administration.
That was that LEC expense.
Oh, was it?
LEC contract is 5443, page 21. Right about the middle of the page, there's $235,000 for LEC contract. So that, that amount, the anticipation is, it can be a swap of, if we're out of the county building, not paying that amount there, we would then use those funds to facilitate the rental agreement of the new facility. But the cost for the, the kind of renovations and such would come out of that bond. There's also been the discussion of whether the sales tax can, generated, could cover the cost of that relocation, in which case the city wouldn't have to necessarily be financing that during the term that they're relocated until they can come back. Kick it back to Chief to comment on anything else from his budget that stands out.
Are there any questions? I just have a couple notable projects and requests that were, so two notable projects or requests that we're focusing on. Jared kind of mentioned our budget, vehicle budget realignment. We kicked out all of our patrol fleet money this year. We're just reinstituting that to what it was in 2024. We've captured what the enterprise fleet cost is, and we're just putting back in so we can replace some patrol vehicles, just to keep in line with making sure that we stay operational with our patrol fleet. The second one is, you'll see a placeholder of $150,000 for body one cameras and in-car cameras. This year, our contract expires with Motorola, so we put that placeholder in there to account for costs increased in cloud storage or technology increase pricing. So we're still in the early stages of seeing if that's going to apply and if that's possible. That's what that placeholder is. And to answer any questions that you guys want to have.
Any questions for Chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we'll shift to fire. On their revenue side, you'll see that we saw the rural fire contracts. This has been fairly steady for a lot of years. It's in the process of being looked at, I think has been for a couple of years, but that, that's what comes from the townships. And we also have miscellaneous fire revenue here. You'll see 2024, there was about $57,000, $58,000. This is the mutual aid reimbursements we're getting when our fire department goes and assists elsewhere as deployed by the state of Kansas. There is a cost that covers our equipment being utilized and then the cost for our, our firemen. A lot of this is offsetting the cost of our salary of paying them to be there, but there is typically an increase, above the actual cost revenue that comes back, and so there is some benefit to the city, apart from just the, the mutual aid provided, that there's a financial incentive as well for the city. So that's brought in here into this revenue. From the fire administrative division, you'll have the salary benefits of their administrative staff, is primarily the command staff, the maintenance contracts here, they have software for their reporting that covers all their cell phones, and then they also, they have an agreement as well with Celica Care that they rolled out a few years ago. That's been going well for them to make sure they're doing, taking care of the kind of physical therapy type, you know, usage of the, the firemen and women. And then you have their utilities, their kind of ongoing costs here for the administrative division. And then under fire operations, you'll see continued uptick in our budget for salaries. If you remember, we rolled out the last six bodies for the Fire Station 3. Rather than be firefighter one or twos, those were firefighter twos and lieutenants for that station, so a little bit higher cost with those positions being added. What that equated to is promotions of the current staff and then bringing in brand-new fire ones, but an increased cost there over what we'd seen in the previous years. You also have the supplies operations here is up a little bit. A lot of the lines, kind of the generic line is up slightly, ticking up due to those kind of additional costs for Station 3. We anticipate over the next few years, we'll see a little star per increases when you have the shiny new object, there's not a lot to fix, and you have all the supplies. But as those things are then utilized and needing to be replaced, we'll see, we'll see an increased cost from a fire department budget to accommodate the replacement of a larger fleet and a larger amount of equipment. And then the new equipment other, you do see a little bit of that. There are some smaller pieces outside of the cost of the project for opening Fire Station 3. That $90,000 in 2026 accommodates an uptick of some of the smaller equipment that will need to be replaced more quickly. That'll be in for Fire Station 3 as well. And with that, I'll invite Chief Ursic up to speak about the fire department budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. As Jared mentioned, yeah, kind of that final stages of implementation, the final six and transitioning from a projected to the operational cost of Station 3 is, is only uptick. Kind of the second highlight of the fire department budget will be the reallocation of the bus truck payments and start funding the apparatus, the replacement, the, the represented several years ago. We're starting to see some fire trucks bounce off their shelf lights. It's time to start, maybe get a plan to replace them before we do multiples of arms. So it's kind of the major work year in the fire department so far.
Someone asked me, how, what is that like with electric vehicles? Do you have specialized equipment for that? Or I, I had no idea, and I was gonna, I should have emailed you.
There's a shortage of the batteries and the fire appliances too.
Oh, okay.
The fire ability in my home is, is the issue with it, but definitely not a whole group way so far. There's fire departments burying them or submerged in water, but still, still kind of hanging out and waiting for the, the writing.
Yeah, the big, yeah, I'm sorry, garden wrappers is not an option, so yeah, that's too expensive, but no, I appreciate that.
Just right quick while you're here, drove by Station 3, landscaping's looking really good. Could you give us, give us a quick, brief update on kind of where everything's at?
Excited. We're probably been on this all four weeks of getting ready to open the station. We're working through the punch list now, trying to satisfy that a couple hundred times. Pretty, pretty normal for that size of building, but mostly with architects and Ross and two that provides that perfect detail ready for, for, so super excited. I mean, I think we got, I think we got finished today, so please, our team grabs.
Sounds good. Thanks, Chief. Any, any other questions for Chief? All right. Thanks, Chief.
Next, we have the parks revenue. These are very status quo, what we've had in the past, cemetery spaces, grave openings, and monument setting, as well as a little bit of miscellaneous revenue. For the parks department, kind of the changes, you'll see the rent office space, we're going to move away from renting a location that we use for storage, and so you'll see a decreased to move away from renting a location that we use for storage, and so you'll see a decreased cost there in 2026 to accommodate that drop off of that contract, very much kind of uptick slightly for costs throughout the year, just throughout the budget, assuming kind of the tariff increases and operational cost increases. Their tree trimming contract, we've seen the city as a whole has experienced an uptick in the tree trimming costs, and so we budgeted more for 2025 and 2026 in the tree trimming line. And then in the new equipment parks, there's a little bit set aside for some mowers and, as well as some new playground equipment that I'll let Tisha speak to a little bit. And then new equipment other, we have an amount slotted for some new mowers and a gator, as well as a shed for, for people's. And with that, I'll kick it to Tisha to talk about parks and then have her stand by, because she'll jump right back up for cemetery.
Good afternoon. We're requesting forty thousand for the replacement and upgrade of playground equipment and surfacing in some of our parks. So forty thousand doesn't go a long ways with playground equipment, it'd probably purchase several individual pieces of equipment, maybe one small playstation, or it would replace some of our sand surfaces with curves, ramps and engineered with fiber surfaces for the A D A accessibility compliance. So additionally, we'd like to highlight the need for new storage shed at people's. Currently, it sits on the ground, and so we would like to pour concrete pad and then have a shed on there. This would enhance our time-saving and efficiency by having a place that we could store equipment at people's. Thank you.
That would be replacing the existing shed that's there?
Yes, it would.
That, that falling down and rat hole, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's great, I mean, yeah.
It's a shed.
Yes, it's a good replacement of the shed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz, I think is calling dibs on the old shed.
I think, yeah.
Next, we have the cemetery budget, here very, very status quo as well, repair equipment line, we have some aging equipment out at the cemetery, so we've upticked that line a little bit, as we've, we've seen some increased repair costs. And then tree trimming as well, up in this budget, they don't have as much space, they do trim the trees there, but the parks division kind of covers a lot, whereas they, they cover a little less. So upticking, but not as significant of a number. And then our new equipment other line here, we set aside some dollars last year in the capital improvement reserve for a dump truck, and then the 2025 amount for new equipment other, fifty thousand will help finish out the cost needed to, to purchase that dump truck for the cemetery in 2025, and then utilize those funds that have been held over. Tisha, is there anything else I'm, I think, speak a little bit of the, the expansion project, kind of an update on that was what we wanted to know.
Yes, excited about the expansion project of the Spalvey Cemetery. We, because the bid came in so low for the first expansion project, we have the opportunity to create an additional section, and so we have Adam kind of working on that right now, and we'll be bringing that to you in the next few weeks or month, so that we can, we can bring that to you and hopefully get another section of an expansion completed with the G O one dollars that were already allocated for the project. So that'll be, yeah, that'll be awesome.
All right, next is the zoo. On the revenue page, you'll notice that the 25 projection is that about twenty-four thousand for the gate receipts like we have in the past, and I failed, I recognize as I went through this yesterday, that I failed to plug in the 2026 revenue, so there's your first twenty-four thousand of problem solving accomplished by the commission, we'll budget a figure in there to match previous years and to make that adjustment in the final budget. Next, we have zoo administration, there is a request here, they did, did a little bit of an adjustment of staff in 2025, their education specialist was transitioned to a maintenance tech position in the maintenance division, and so you'll see the 25 projection here for the rev, the salaries in admin goes down, but the maintenance side goes up, so that's kind of a, a head for head, a one for one. And then there's a request in 2026 to bring back the education specialist position that was transitioned away, and Christie will speak to that as well as their other staffing requests a little bit later. Here you have the, you'll point out, there's a few lines in the training education and some of the travel costs that have been decreased significantly over previous years in the 25 projection, that's the 25 budget cut that was made last year, so the zoo is sticking, they're going back to the kind of the what was before with their 26 request, bringing their travel and training back up to the figures that they had seen previous years after, before the budget cuts from last year. A lot of the rest of this for administration stays fairly similar, and then their new equipment office for this division is to add a six-seater golf cart to replace the one that they currently have right now. And I'll go through, I think, all of zoo, and then I'll have Christie speak at the end of the, of the division. For zoo maintenance, the salaries, here you see the uptick in the 25 figure and the 26 figure accommodating that addition of the position that slid over from the administration division. You also have the new equipment other at the bottom of the page, they're, they have some miscellaneous equipment they're putting in in 2025, and then in 2026, they're looking to replace a Polaris U T V. And then for zoo improvement in 2026, you'll see that they, up to the ninety-three thousand is to add a dedicated storage facility, storage building, as well as updating and improving some of the fences to be better, kind of more viewable, but still provide security. For the zoo animal care, the 26 request for the salaries and benefits has been adjusted up to accommodate the addition of two new keepers, some security increasing abilities there of adding keepers, kind of getting ahead of the game for some requirements that may be coming down from A Z A, as far as having two, two key controls instead of radio controls like we have when entering dangerous animals enclosures or their facilities. We have an animal transport line that's been added to the budget, sixty-five eighty-two for fifteen thousand. Previously, we've had some funds that were donated or set aside for animal transport costs, but the revenue source of that is somewhat drying up, and so the city's going to have to shift to accommodate those costs for the, when we transport animals, go pick up animals, depending on the animal, those can be pretty fairly minimal or fairly extensive. And so we're budgeting fifteen thousand in 2026 to start incrementally kind of biting off the general fund burden of, of taking that on. And then the zoo building and grounds, they're looking at a, thus enhancing the Saurus crane barn in 2026. And for zoo animal health and nutrition, you'll see the salary for 2025 is down quite a bit over what was originally projected, we currently are without a vet, and so that vacancy of that position, we adjusted down the salary line, but you'll see an accommodating increase in the contracted vet services line, fifty-two eighty-three, because all of that is contract at this point. I believe, Christie can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the new vet's supposed to start in August, so that's exciting, but then we'll see 2026 fully budgeted for the, the division anticipating that we'll have full staffing in that, in that division. And then in, I'll point out, 2026 for the animal feed, you'll see an uptick to the two-hundred-and-five-thousand, as been presented in the past, sometimes due to timing, we end up with an extra meat order in a given year, and 26 is one of those years, so because of that extra meat order hitting timing-wise, there's an extra cost there as well. And then the new equipment other, we're looking at getting a blood analyzer on site, be able to not have to send everything off and get a little bit quicker results, and so that's that new equipment other line for 2026. With that, I'll invite Christie up.
Good afternoon. As one of only two hundred and thirty-seven facilities that is accredited by the Association of Zoos and Aquarians and a facility licensed by U S D A, meeting ever-rising standards and regulations is a big part of what we do, as well as meeting the needs of our staff, the residents and the expectations of our guests. Staff play a big role in accomplishing all of this. In the proposed budget for 2026, we have brought back the travel and training that was intended as a one-time cut in 2025. This is essential to the continued development of staff in operations and to staff retention. In the budget, we have the addition of iPads for keepers to use to facilitate secure, thorough, timely and efficient record keeping and communication. We also have three additional staff in the proposed budget, two more keepers, allowing us to implement an engineering control method that increases safety when working with our apex predators, as well as providing more time for animal care staff to evolve practices beyond the basics, supporting their professional development while they work here, as well as further development for our operations. The third position would be in the conservation awareness team, replacing the position we just rededicated to the maintenance team to keep up with facility needs. This additional position will allow us to return our engagement efforts to levels we've established before that change. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Christie?
So the animal transport that was added is not really related to the new equipment that we're going to buy for blood analyzer to keep those animals?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good job.
Next, we move to recreation, we start with recreation revenue, you'll see this is kind of their general revenue, it also incorporates the revenue that comes from Garden Rapids, and so you'll, you'll see we upticked slightly the, the fees fitness revenue, we've seen continued usage of Core Fitness and it's been a successful facility, adding the, the new equipment that we have out there and doing the leases on that, the hope was that it would keep us kind of at the front line of always having nice equipment and being able to provide a good service, and so I think we've seen that offset by the revenues that have upticked there as well. Everything else fairly steady with previous years upticking slightly, anticipating kind of the growth of the division. Rec operations, you'll see here we have the repair buildings jump in 2025, if you'll remember, there was an item presented early, kind of the end of last year was for the HVAC replacement of, due to the failed HVAC at the rec, the rec center, and so that, that cost came out in 2025, because after they installed, then we rebuilt for them, and so that sixty-eight thousand is an uptick for that one-time cost for the HVAC, and then they continue to see kind of ongoing general repair buildings costs, but in 26, they're also looking at doing some office remodel and kind of the front end of the rec, rec division over there. The rest of the budget is fairly steady through the, kind of the routine costs, and then the new equipment other, they are looking to add new software or adjust from their current software in 2025, as well as look at iPads and some office furniture, and so that's the uptick for the 2025 figure of that forty thousand under new equipment other. And I think that's, that, I'll point out, the transfer recreation, again, consistent with previous years, we're transferring an amount to the rec reserve to kind of build up for the, if something should happen and we need to, like interruption of services that we provide, that was previously fifty thousand, we made the adjustment last year to cut that in half and make it twenty-five thousand, we're staying with that for 25 and for 2026. Recreation aquatics, you'll see that we've decreased the salary line for the, the pool staff, we had seen lower figures than what we were budgeting for, some of that's accommodated by weather and with the adjusted hours at the pool last year, we did see a decrease in the amount of overtime we were experiencing in the temporary staff there, and so we've adjusted those figures down to closer be in line with what we, we believe will be the reality this year. We have an uptick in the repair other line, we have some needs to replace the paneling in the children's area, and then the slides need some maintenance and some T L C, as well as we're looking at a painting, kind of a re, rehab and painting of the pool as a whole, and so that hundred and forty thousand, a hundred thousand in 2026 and 2025 for the repair, is just the ongoing maintenance of the, the facility. You also see we increased chemicals as we consistently have used more than what we budgeted the past two years, we've upticked that to, to track more with the, the expectation of what those costs, some of that cost increase was due to price hikes and availability, but some of it was also just as we kind of get to know the facility of what the reality is, we've, we've adjusted that to be more in line. And then aquatic facility is the last line of the aquatic division, this amount is kind of held for large capital expenditures, if we're adding new equipment, new features, whatever's not expensed in the current year is then held in the capital improvement reserve for those large, kind of extra-large capital purchases specific to the pool when they do occur. Next, you have the arts division, fairly small division, not a lot of cost here and very steady with what, what we've had in the previous years. Next is athletics, and you'll see the salary benefits stays pretty on, on pace with previous year. Our contract services, this is where we pay the umpires and the refs out of, those contract positions we have, and so that, that number is staying fairly steady. And then our, our other cost miscellaneous cost, training, education are, are on par with the past, and our largest cost in this division is the supplies for the athletics, this is all the gear that's bought and then distributed out to the participants of the different sports, and we do have some new equipment that's replaced annually, you know, goalposts, soccer goals, things like that, scoreboards. And then last part of the rec, we have the recreation fitness division, this is for Core Fitness, we have the staffing costs there, the rent office space was negotiated last year and was adjusted down, so that's staying steady through 25 and 26. And then our lease agreements at the bottom, these are the, the amounts that will be kind of a steady ongoing cost to just constantly have that new equipment every five years, they'll rotate off a section of the equipment to make sure that we keep up and, and don't end up with broken, kind of old, broken, unusable equipment. And with that, I'll kick it to Tisha to kind of touch base on the points there.
All right. The software that we currently have has some tracking issues with some of the reports that we have, which makes some of them not very accurate, which is not bad when we're looking at our performance standards and where do we want to be, what we want to accomplish and our goals, so it would also be easier for our customers to navigate, hopefully with the, the new software. So we need to look at, at something different, and we'd like to research software and, and purchase something that's more user-friendly. Along with that, we would need to purchase some new iPads and new E M Vs with the credit card readers that would go along with that and be compatible with that software as well. Garden Rapids, Garden Rapids has some minor repairs to the flooring and the shallow end of the quarter pool, and then we would need to paint the pool as well, the slides need to be cleaned, sorry, we need to remove that existing wax and any of the hard water residue, and then the sealant, and then reseal and wax again, and be prepared for next year. Any questions?
How's the attendance? I mean, I know it's, we've had some cold days.
Nobody there today.
Yeah, no, well, this weekend, it was, it was packed.
Let's just say it's been a bad start to the pool season. We did, Sunday, we had over a thousand people.
Wow. Oh, my gosh.
So everybody was really excited to be enjoying the pool, and it was nice and warm, so.
The rainy days just build the hype, right?
Exactly, definitely did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have street and traffic, well, there's some miscellaneous revenue in the street division, but that's, that's very kind of few and far between, not, not a number we budget for. The street department, you'll see an increase in their salary benefits, just kind of on trend with what we've seen across the departments. The main line in the street division is the material street repair, if you'll remember, we upticked that significantly to start biting off the recommendations from the P E C plan, what was an eight-year, two to two and a half million dollars a year plan, we increased about six hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand a year, and so we're biting that off a little slower. Tyler will be able to speak to a little bit of what they've seen in the projects, we have seen cost increases in our mill and overlay estimations as well as our regular chip and crack seal, so our anticipation of how much we'd be able to start biting off on those has been diminished by just the regular cost increases we've seen, particularly in those, those chip seal and crack seal programs. And then you also see the building, their, the public transportation line actually goes down for 2026. If you'll remember, the, the request from transit last year was a one-off year where they were replacing an extra bus, and so they did anticipate it'd be an uptick year, and then it would come back down, and so that came to fruition in their request for 2026. In the traffic division, their 2026 salaries does go up a little bit as they are requesting an, an addition of another traffic technician, they currently have one supervisor technician, so this would be a third technician added to their crew. And then their maintenance traffic signals, that eighty thousand really is kind of the, the normal upkeep and maintenance of the traffic signals, we've talked about the C I P, kind of the overhaul of the, the software, the, the camera equipment that goes with it, that's, this isn't really that line, this is just kind of the normal upkeep, and there's also the cost for the signalization at Fleming and Spruce that's upcoming, that won't come out of the general fund, that'll come from the electric fund, but that's a project that, that's upcoming as well, and so I'll let Tyler talk about kind of what's going on with traffic and the street.
Yeah, good afternoon, commissioners. So as Jared mentioned, we do continue to try to follow that P E C engineering recommendations when they did that, force, we, we've also changed up a few things, and I'm just looking at that recommendation and kind of going out and evaluating the streets. One of, one of the things we did start doing was the edge milling on the sides where all that chip seal has built up, we started to kind of edge milling that where it doesn't need a complete mill and overlay, so we've saved so many there, that actually got done about two weeks ago on a few streets that we selected. Then also, as Jared also mentioned, we, we had the mill and overlay of about three hundred thousand dollars over budget, we, we're going to try to scale back on that, I think, next year and go out to bid a little sooner to try to get it on schedule. Then also, with that, we, we have the, excuse me, alleys do come out of this budget as well, so we've had a lot of alley repairs here, everywhere today, so that's, that's kind of been taken in, and it will continue, I'm sure. Some of the other projects that we have for next year for this material street repair, we have some concrete on the main line of Kansas Avenue, Buffalo Jones, it's getting replaced, and then we've had some patches that we've had to do here recently, or domain break patches in some other areas, but we do have the chip sealing that's going to start on the twelfth of this month, so that'll, that'll get done, crack sealing, they already took place earlier this year, but we are seeing those prices continue to kind of increase on for the oil and all that. One other thing I just wanted to throw out, we, we went to a asphalt, World of Asphalt Conference earlier this year, and we found that it's a different aggregate for bonding on that chip seal, kind of works out a little bit better, you don't have to use as much material, and so we're actually going to have a section of Fleming that we're going to test out on that here coming soon, so. The other one is the, the maintenance traffic signals, yeah, we are continuing to replace and install the battery backups in where we don't have battery backups for any kind of power outage, we have a plan, I think it's a four-year plan to get every signal We have a plan, I think it's a four-year plan, to get every signal having the battery backups in them. And then also, we look to replace some of the install and kind of replace the backplates on the signals as well. So Jenny Barker in K56 has those new signals with reflectivity around it. That's our goal, is to get ours, change a bit of that, too. And then also, yeah, the spruce and flooding signal, we're in the process of meeting with landowners right now for right-of-way, and I believe the next phase is the construction. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
The last division for the general fund is the capital improvement division. You'll see fireworks, we've decreased slightly. We have been advised of increased costs for fireworks, but we somewhat over-budgeted this last few years, so we're kind of calibrating it down. But we'll still be able to accommodate this show similar to what we've done in the past. But with the tariff issues, fireworks is definitely one of the top of the list of things that are going to be hit by that. From the vendor, they actually mentioned that they're probably going to not buy anything and use their inventory. So if that continued till next year, I anticipate we'd see very significant increases. They threw out, I think, 250% increases of what they've experienced.
Are you looking into like any kind of new elements or anything like that for those?
I think like drones?
No, I was thinking about like the lights with the bubbles.
I think this year, it's very, pretty similar to what we've done in the past. If costs don't come down next year, we probably would look at one show instead of two or some other, some other cost. The Main Street program, so the costs we get for the Main Street program are for Downtown Vision. Downtown Vision, the economic development is for the Finney County Economic Development. And in the miscellaneous line, we have the band, the municipal band. All three requests came in at the same request as 2025, and so those have all been budgeted at the same flat rate of what was budgeted last year for each of those entities. Here we have the golf course building, that $425,000 is the amount allocated to go towards the golf course fund from the general fund. And then I'll point out in the miscellaneous line, the 6480, the $425,000 for 2025, that's that placeholder for the pay, study costs, and implementation costs that the commission could be able to utilize to roll out an adjustment if desired. And then I'll just point out social funding at the 21.5 is the amount revised last year, and we've stuck with that same value for the 2026 budget, and that funds the community grant and the art grant. And with that, I think that wraps up the general fund as a whole. I will point out, previously, we printed all your supplemental information that departments provide to us. I didn't print it in your budgets, find yours, but it is attached to the agenda items. So if you want to go back and look through any of the, kind of the breakout from each division, each department, they do a very good job of very detailed breaking out what those lines each made up of, or anything that I didn't cover today. If the commission still desires, we did kind of leave off the pre-meeting discussion for the prioritization list of the CIP. If that's something that you'd like to bring back up now, I'm more than happy to take feedback.
I was wondering if you guys would like to kind of move in a direction where we offer to Jared our feedback by the end of this week or something?
I would say at least until next meeting, but...
Are you saying physically?
We do have an opening for a pre-meeting coming up, too, that we could retread that a little bit using background and, you know, kind of hearing the introduction of the idea, which is, you know, has a very practical purpose for this budget, but it's also sort of trying to anticipate, like, can we systematically come up with a way to sort of integrate projects into the proposed budget that, and then help the commission with that decision-making when we get to that time of the year? So we could kind of run it back a little bit, learning from what we heard today, but also learning from what you might provide, Jared, between now and then.
Well, we have like the ad valorem, well, we know those exact amounts for the pre-meeting you're anticipating, Matt, or will we know the exact amounts or no?
Yeah, we might. We might, which would help in the context of this year's budget. I think the, you know, I think maybe we're hoping for a little bit more of the system side of things.
Right, into the future.
Yeah. Because you could be, I mean, you could be kicking around what you want to do for this year's budget clear up until the August adoption date. You know, that's, that's the hard stuff when you're kind of balancing where you want to end up and the other cuts that you might have to consider, or revenue enhancements, whatever. You know, I mean, we kind of get that part, but I think we're looking more for how do we plug the CIP into our processes?
Sounds like a consensus to give Jared some feedback, but then do a pre-meeting to kind of confirm and make sure, kind of give that guidance.
Do you have a date for the pre-meeting that you were thinking?
It'd be the next meeting.
17.
Is that the open one?
Yeah.
So then we could provide feedback before then.
That would be the next, that would be the next city commission meeting.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Wynn's point was, you could then provide email feedback of your thoughts. I would then consolidate that as a display of, here's what everyone's thinking.
And then at that pre-meeting, then kind of go from there. Okay. Sound good to everybody?
It sounds like a consensus. All right, I'll shoot out an email to the group. You can respond individually with your individual feedback.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Jared.
Thank you. We have two executive sessions. Let's first probably go to the consent agenda, and then Commissioner reports, and then we'll go back to the executive sessions, so.
Sounds good. If approved, the consent agenda would be items 13A and B.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda 13A and B.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Andrew, you're up first.
So great. Well, I really enjoyed the pre-meeting. I think, I'm thinking about process is really important in going forward and what that looks like. I did really appreciate the idea of, so what does that look like? I mean, as far as points of pain, you know, how looking, maybe we pay for things over a long haul, so I really do appreciate, just, there's a lot of, there was a lot of thought gone into that. I also appreciated all of the residents who attended the city commission meeting. That was great. I mean, this was, it was awesome to have everyone here and just to have everyone's comments. I think it's the most we've heard from, for several years, and I really, I really appreciated it and anticipated just hearing their input, and then also so we can make some, you know, really good decisions. Beef Empire Days, their first weekend was incredible. I mean, the parade was really nice, the rodeo, of course, it was packed. There was, if you didn't get there early, you didn't get a seat, so, and I didn't get there early, so. But I had a really good time. We had a good, and I didn't stay, these things go forever, but I can't stay up that late anymore. So, but the rodeo was, it was really fun, and it was really entertaining. I was really impressed with how well that rodeo did, and they kept everything, everything going, and it was really, really well done. I also just want to open up a discussion. Hopefully, you know, I was thinking about how improved our relationship is with the county commission. And one time, we talked about, I know chief, at that time was Chief Utes, and then also, or Utes, and then there also was Sheriff Basque, and we talked about them using the same systems to really communicate. I hope those talks can be also start again with the county. I think it would be really beneficial. We, they did a lot of work, and I think it was all taken care of, and then, I'm not really sure what happened, but that's one thing I was thinking about this week as far as the communication between all of those entities, how, you know, it would really help, and I think with some of the share, or the cost sharing. So if there's any way to open up those talks again, I think we have a different, we've entered a different season in our relationship with the county, and so I think that's really good, and so I would love to see those talks opened up. I really enjoyed Bob Holler and Park. It was really, it was a neat day in June, and one to remember, but I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of, especially of his family coming and honoring their late father and just all of the community members who showed up. It's gonna be, it's already a standout park, and I'm excited over the next several years as we are able to do improvements there that really becomes a place for people, for the community together. So I really appreciate that. Other than that, I just want to say thanks to all of our first responders, all the great work you do. I know that a lot of weeks and we're taking time off, you're out there still working all the streets and doing all of that stuff, so I really appreciate that you're there for us, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Landgraf.
So I just want to start by saying it was really great being able to have that pre-meeting so that way we could get together and kind of discuss together. I think that's one of the most important things for us as a commission, is being able to communicate together and be able to bring up ideas. Also, it's great being able to do the Bob Holler and ribbon cutting, be able to see so many people there, even with this rain. I wish it would have been a nice sunny day for a park opening, but even with that, it's nice to have his family there as well, and just having everyone there. Also Beef Empire Days, I was able to go to the rodeo last weekend, and it was amazing just the attendance there. As Troy was saying, just the entire grandstands were just completely full, so it's great being able to see so much of the community, be able to come together and kind of support that, and also just have a great time. I've heard a couple of concerns relating to a couple different areas in town. One of the concerns is with Schulman and Jenny Barker, the drainage ditch. I've heard concerns about kids swimming in that drainage ditch, so I just want to bring that up to staff, just kind of bring that to your awareness. And then also, issues with the guttering on Gillespie and Center on the east side. I've heard some concerns about it not properly draining on the gutters, and it's staying pooled up and causing smell during raining times, so I just want to bring that forward as well.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, I don't want to repeat everything that other commissioners were that I had on my list also, but I appreciate, you know, the pre-meetings and the ribbon cutting also. But I do like to bring up, and I meant to bring this up with HJ and Steve in the room, but if we could, maybe just ask the question, because there is this new development going on here in town, is there information on their site or website that could be accessed to the, for the public to kind of gain access to and educate themselves on gathering that information? So if there is, if they could share that with us or apply it to our website if we can, or if that's something we can do, that was kind of an ask from the community, so I thought I'd share that question here. But also, brought up earlier in the meetings of note about the Humane Society wanting, asking us to attend a visit or a tour through their facility, and if we can maybe pop out some dates that we can all be there to go through that, and we'll get a show of the facility there. So one other thing, too, to bring up to the bench here is just the, I guess, there's a lot of traffic that's going on, there's a lot of racing going on in the community, and I guess citizens are concerned. There's been a lot of accidents that have, came about, and so the concern is, what can we do as a community or as a police department to help dissolve that or reduce that, those incidents in our community? So I don't have an answer to that. I don't know if we'll have an answer with that right away, but I bring that to us so that we can maybe do some research on. So with that, I'd just like to end with, appreciate all of the information from the Star Bond, all of the information from the community who have came and asked questions, that's why we're here. And I've always kind of stated that if there's anything or any question that you have and need to go to anybody, I'm always open to emails or phone conversations, so I'd be glad to get some questions answered for you that way, if you don't want to come directly to the city or anyone else. But I've always put that out there, so that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Wynn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Long meeting today, and we're still not done, so we're going to hang in on there. On Tuesday, I joined Louisville Finney County, who brought in upstream training just to kind of get a good firsthand thoughts on how it's like to work and engage in youth and what youth advocacy looks like, how to approach them on very sensitive topics that otherwise most people are really scared to approach young people with, and that was just very eye-opening for me. And then on Wednesday, I joined Municipal Court, I think Wednesday, for a tour and to sit on these court cases and to see how all the operation works. The software they use is mind-boggling, and I thought I was young until I saw Municipal Court use all these different softwares and be so savvy with it, and it was just very impressive. But yeah, I think that meetings like these are difficult, but I think that it is a really good example of public engagement. I think hopefully we can offer a relationship to our community that extends further than just us being up here and just being the almighty judge and making decisions, but hopefully being near that listens well and a voice that can reason well, too.
I do, just wanted to kind of reiterate what the other commissioners noted about the grand opening of the newest park in the community. It's great to have parks and green space in our community. It's, like I mentioned, it's one of our goals with all these developments that we have, to have green space that adds that quality of life in those areas for people. And then just a lot of summer activities and events going on. Kids are out and about, just be mindful of all of the activities going on in the community. Make sure to slow down in the construction zones around. We do have a lot of construction going on with road construction and everything, so just be mindful of the workers, too, in our, in our community. And on that note, we'll transition to go to our first executive session.
Mayor, can we take a break after, before that, and then, I mean, we can do the exec session.
Yeah. Take a, another, take a five-minute break. Take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 4:50. We'll take a recess, and then we'll start the, our first executive session.
And both of those executive sessions won't require action afterwards, so if we can shut down the broadcast of the meeting now, I think that'll be good.
Can we just make a motion for that?
Can we just a motion? Just let folks know.
That we're going to take a break, but we can shut down because we'll start executive sessions and no action. Finding action will be taken after those executive sessions, so.
Re-convene at?
Re-convene at 4:50. One.
Sounds good.
Thank you.